Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Madera City Council and a special meeting of the Madera City Council as the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Today is Wednesday, August 20th, 2025, and I call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. City Clerk Gonzalez.
The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at www.madera.gov/live. Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833 and enter ID 849-9322-9238. Press star nine to raise your hand to comment and star six to unmute yourself to speak. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West Fourth Street, Madera, California, 93637. We'd also like to remind the public that Wordly is available for translation services.
Thank you for that. I call this meeting to order with roll call, please.
Mayor Gallegos.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Zachariah.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Evans is absent. Councilmember Mejia is absent, and Councilmember Vegas.
Ah, here.
Thank you for that. Let the record show that Councilmember Evans is ill and will be excused this evening. With that, we have an invocation by Pastor Sosa if he'd like to come up, please, and everybody, please stand.
Would you bow in prayer with me? Creator, life-giving Spirit, and Heavenly Father, we pray for our city council as they gather here today intent on doing good work. As they seek to represent fairly and well those who have given them this task, may their efforts be blessed with insight and guided by understanding and wisdom. May they seek to serve with respect to all. May their personal faiths give them strength to act honestly and well in all matters before them. We entrust these men and women and their work into your care this evening. Amen.
Please remain standing for the flag salute by Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Ready? Salute.
Thank you for that, Pastor Sosa, for coming tonight, and Mayor Protem Rodriguez. At this time, I'll move on to the approval of the agenda. I bring it back to my colleagues for any concerns or changes, comments. I see none. Would like a motion and a second?
A motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, City Clerk Gonzalez.
Tonight's presentation is a proclamation recognizing National Senior Citizens Day.
What a great evening to recognize these wonderful seniors. Not only are they seniors, they are seasoned individuals. That's what I love to say. So if I could have Yolanda, Frank, Pete, Roman, Kathy, Margaret, Pamela, Carlos, Michael, Phyllis, and Sandy come on up if you're here tonight. And our city staff that also works with our seniors. We can put some people over here. Well, that cleared off half the room here. All right, what representation? Tonight, I would like to give this proclamation as National Senior Citizen Day. It's a day that we honor our seasoned population for the value and contribution they bring to the home, family, and society as a whole in this community of Madera. The city of Madera has grown numbers of senior citizens who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community. The city recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and supports the seasoned adults that may need to make choices about how they age and grow wiser. The city council wishes to express its appreciation for past and continuing contributions to our senior residents, to the community, and our nation, and recognize that the seasoned adults are the vital and growing part of our city. I hear C.C. Gallegos, Mayor of the City of Madera, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim August 21st, 2025, as National Senior Citizens Day. We thank you for all the wisdom that you give to this community.
If somebody would like to speak, one of our seasoned... Yolanda, come on over to the mic. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here beyond my senior hours. As a resident of Madera since 2018, I was kind of lost. I was going to spend my golden years here with my husband, but unfortunately, he passed away in 2021, so I really had nothing to do. So somebody told me, why don't you try the senior center? And I did. And I've been going faithfully, at least three, four times a week, faithfully. I love the people, the camaraderie. I love just making friends. As a former teacher of 38 years, that's my personality. I love helping people. I love being around people. And I love using my language skills, not only of English, but Spanish, Italian, and French. So, to me, if the senior center were to be kind of gone, where would I go? And I don't want to stay at home and watch the boob tube all day. So I really enjoy going to the senior center, especially on Fridays, because I get to sing my heart out. As long as the ceiling doesn't come down on me, I'm a-okay. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Oh, but can you come up and introduce our staff that helps with our... Oh, Karina, come on up and introduce your staff.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Karime Lopez. I am one of the site coordinators for our senior services. I am very happy to be here this evening and even more happy to have some of our participants present here, our seniors. It is my pleasure to be here today and like how she mentioned, you know, it is, it is an honor, not just being their coordinators, but being able to share memories with them and be able to make them like their second home to them.
And we'll let the record reflect, Councilwoman Mejia has entered the chamber.
And you're aging well, so come on up.
Careful down the steps. Careful down this steps. That's it.
I don't know, whichever one you want. I just didn't want somebody to crash. We don't have the robotic ones that just move them around.
Oh, my hair right there is sticking out. Hey, he's grabbing the door. Thank you, Chief, for that assistance there. Okay, we're going to move on. Public comment, City Clerk Gonzalez.
The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from making any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time.
Thank you for that. At this time, I open up for public comment. If anybody would like to speak, please line up at the podium, and you will have three minutes on our clock.
Mayor, so I typically don't speak during public comment, but if I may just take a few moments to welcome our new fire chief, Chief Pandarvis, who's right over here. Chief, Chief has been a longtime Cal Fire employee. We're extremely excited that he chose to come work for us here at the city of Madera. Unfortunately, Chief McCombe couldn't be here tonight. He abandoned us. That's a joke. So Chief McCombe is still with us, but now he's actually overseeing Madera, Merced, and Mariposa Counties, and Chief Pandarvis will be here. And I'm going to turn it over to him, and maybe if he would like to say a couple of words. So again, thank you, Chief.
Well, good evening to each and every one of you. My name is Larry Pandarvis. I am your new Madera City Fire Chief. It is an honor and a privilege to be able to work in Madera once again. I was your battalion chief back in 21, in 2021 and 2022. So I am familiar with the area. I'm familiar with a lot of the employees and a lot of the familiar faces. So I look forward to working with each and every one of you. I am replacing Chief McCombe, who did promote to the Deputy Chief of Operations with Cal Fire, still in the area, but now he oversees three, three counties, a lot, lot larger area. So I know I've got big boots to fill, large boots to fill, but I'm looking forward to it. It's gonna, know it's gonna be a challenge, but I thank you all.
Right. Thank you for being here. Welcome aboard. Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez, for that introduction.
Good evening. My name is Michaela Contreras, a resident of Madera and a dedicated member of Madera Splash Pad Project. I'm here to request the allocation of surplus funds in the amount of $674,878.37 for the construction of a splash pad at Lyons Town and Country Park. Last year, the city was awarded $1.6 million towards park improvements. The cost for the trailer project and a 10% contingency have recently been approved for a total of $929,121.63. This includes the original construction agreement and construction contingency. The city can fund the splash pad using the remaining surplus of over $674,000 from last year's awarded grants. This would be a wonderful improvement for the park and a benefit for the city of Madera. A splash pad would provide a safe, accessible, and essential recreation area for local families and visitors. This will not only improve the park's amenities, but also transform it into a leading destination, greatly improving the quality of life of everyone here in Madera. I want to take a moment to publicly thank Councilmember Rodriguez for his comment last month regarding a possible cost estimate for the type of amenity. Also, City Manager Rodriguez and Parks Director Joseph Ebert. We wanted to say a huge thanks to you for, for this morning's meeting with MSPP. We really appreciate you taking the time to listen to what we had to say and to, for our presentation on the Splash Pad Initiative, and we look forward to our continued collaboration. I hope that everyone has a wonderful evening. Blessings to all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, everyone. Is this a public comment? Okay, can we, do we get a copy? Can we get a copy of this? Or, or is it just for us to see it? Yeah, okay, thank you. I wasn't sure. I'm not too familiar with the political thing. But anyway, my time is running outside, can see. My name is Yolanda Contreras. I'm a resident. As you know me, I spoke here before. But I just want to share, I'm excited to share that the support for this initiative is spreading throughout our community. There are so many residents who believe this splash pad is a great investment for Madera. On behalf of the many Maderian residents who support the community splash project, I would like to share some of the following statements that they have added on our petition. And just to keep it private, I'm going to go ahead and just share the name. Monica shared, "Es un proyecto donde la familia entera puede beneficiarse. Apoyemos a estos líderes que han trabajado mucho por hacer esto posible." Maria, "This helps kids stay fresh in the summer and have fun at the same time. And for people that don't have money, transportation, to go to big water parks, it's a free place with water for the family to enjoy together." Reina, "Sería una buenísima idea traer agua como esto para Madera." Laura, "As a full-time working, a single mom, it is hard finding things, activities in Madera that are after-work hours for my toddler to enjoy, especially during these hot summer days. I find myself always having to take him to Fresno to enjoy various activities such as indoor playgrounds or splash pads, as Fresno has nine different locations. It would be nice if my hometown would offer just the same options, as I want to raise my children here and make new friendships, but there are very limited options. Our current options are more suitable for stay-at-home mothers, and I have to provide for my child, so my hours are restricted." Lisbeth, "I would be, it would be wonderful to have a splash pad here in Madera and city. The temperatures are very hot, and as mommy, I don't have options to take them and enjoy it a fresh place where I can have so much fun and play with water." Shayla, "As a big sister, I want to see my little brother grow up and enjoy water in town, just like I did growing up. I'm super proud who's going out there, out of their way to speak up for him and kids his age to get what they deserve." Pete, "Building this encourage two..."
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. I come here as a special needs mom just to create awareness. I don't want to come here and complain, but want to have the community aware. So a few days ago, I went to Yosemite Most 99 Cents and More. I took my son, who's disabled, in a stroller. I was approached and told to leave the stroller in the front, and I wasn't going to be able to move along the aisles with it. I had advised the owner that he couldn't do that because my son is disabled, and I used the stroller as a means of transportation. But either way, he went ahead and told me that if I want to go ahead and shop there with a stroller, it would be only with his medical transportation. Okay, so it's discrimination. Two, I want to make you aware of how dirty downtown is. So I know you guys were more than likely clean it up for the parades, but when I walk with my sons, because I don't have transportation, we walk downtown and smell the stench of pee and poop. The homeless will smear poop on the windows, example, closing things. It's been there for months already, and I just want to make, you know, sure if you guys could somehow pressure wash this, wash it, and also see if the buildings are actually in code or if there are code violations, because the awnings are falling apart as well. Three, I'm here also to make aware of special needs education therapy. My son hasn't received occupational therapy for over a year. PT services, right now, they were paused. They're short-staffing because, per Lori, the Public Health Manager, there's not enough retention or, or reasons to attract staff here and keep them. So not only that, but there is miscommunication between the district and the county. My son's IEP expired sometime in February, but nobody reached out to me, so I could have his IEP redetermined. So I was pushed around from one gold, gold school to special needs school to the district, where the district said that my son belonged to the county, but the county said that he belonged to the district. So right now, I haven't received a callback, email, or anything about this, and I'm waiting for them to actually call me back. But if not, you know, I will continue to follow through. But I do feel that special needs children, special needs parents do not receive guidance as they should or support. I see a lot of parent square activity going on about making awareness for resources for parents, but they do not attach, or if you have a child with IEP or special needs, review this information. So yes, that's from me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns. I live in the Cajunian Homes located next to the new King, K through eight, King Hussein School. First, I want to say that this school is a great development in our children and community, in our, for our children and communities, excuse me. We are very much in support of projects that improve education and provide opportunities for our kids. My concern, and a concern of many of my neighbors, is not that the school itself, but the traffic and safety impact that this project will bring directly into our neighborhood. I have noticed that streets have been cut from Cleveland Avenue to Running Brook Street, along with San Felipe and Fairway Avenue. With a thousand students or more, where is this road infrastructure to accommodate the added traffic? There are no stop signs in our residential neighborhood, as this would bring heavy traffic on the narrow residential streets, not designed for the, for that level of use. Increased traffic congestion, congestion during pickup and drop-off times. Significant wear and tear of the pavement and curbs, which will lead to costly repairs down the road. Has a traffic engineer study been conducted to assess this impact? If so, where can the residents find this information? What is the plan to keep the children and the motoring public safe during the peak traffic hours? Why not use Fairway Avenue to the east of the school rather than funneling traffic through narrow residential streets? Will the school, will, will there be school gates remain, or will the school gates remain closed at night and weekends so the neighborhood doesn't become a cut-through for outside traffic? Before, before moving forward, we strongly urge the city and the school district to conduct a formal traffic study to evaluate safety, road impacts, and emergency access. This study should also explore whether alternate routes exist that could help impacts on the residential, residents while keeping students safe. The last thing any of us want is, is a preventable traffic and safety issue involving our children and our neighbors. For context, I work as a traffic control supervisor for the county. So I firsthand have roadway design and congestion, I first, excuse me. So I, I see firsthand how roadway and design and congestion can create real hazards. But tonight, I'm speaking to you simply as a resident of this neighborhood. I appreciate your guys' time, and thank you for listening to our concerns.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, council members and Mayor. My name is Jose Rivera. I've been a resident here in Madera for about more than 30 years. I just would like to continue reading some of the comments that we left off and were unable because of the three-minute time limit. But I do believe that this is important for them to be able to hear their voices so we can know what people are saying and how they feel about this project. Elian wrote, "Community activity, especially ones kids can attend, can bring people together, which is good for everyone. Also, the ladies at the booth on August 9th were very sweet." Isamar wrote, "As a mommy to a loving water little boy, it would be awesome to have a place for my toddler. Plus, it would be a must-safe, a must-s safer option for busy moms with activities for the little ones. Madera is growing, and we need more kids in family-friendly places to go to." Vicente, "We need this park for the little ones." Hayder, "Give kids more to do in Madera." John, "This would be great for the kids." Tiffany, "Really need another place for families to get wet, to stay cool in the summer." Vanessa, "I really hope we can bring this to our community." Wendy, "This will be good for the family so that they could get together and have fun as a family. This would help us for when weather gets very hot. They could go somewhere where they could get wet." Moisés, "Let's do it." I would like to thank also the city planning members and the park recreational services for today's time. It was a great meeting with them, and I do can see they're, they're really engaged with our communities, and I know that they will do their best for us and will help us continue developing this. I also thank the city members here for their time. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tina Hernandez. I'm a resident of Madera. For about nine years now, we came from the Bay Area. And I would write to, like to read what I wrote to the council members out loud. "I am a mother and have two little ones. I would like to support the Madera Splash Pad Project and ask for each and every one of you to please approve on this very beneficial project for our community. We need this, this space for our community during the hot summer weather to safely cool down. I have two little children that have enjoyed the outdoors, and because of that heat, the heat, we are having to stay home or do indoor play. And sometimes that doesn't work out, so we have to resort to going outdoors. We would like the option to just drive down the street here in Madera and have some fun cooling down, but instead, we have had to travel mainly to Fresno, sometimes Merced, and/or nearby cities to play in their splash pads. We, we are, I'm sorry, while we, while we are there in other communities, we are also spending money on gas, food, et cetera, when we would prefer to spend money in Madera. As you know, traveling is also time-consuming. My kids often get anxious by the time we get there. Sometimes we would have to leave because, because of traveling. They would get tired or not get interested anymore because of the travel in the car. Not having to travel out of town just to cool down and enjoy the fun of a splash pad would help us so much. A splash pad in Madera is much needed. Every city seems to have them, but why not us? My children and I are asking for your help and to please support this project and make it a reality. Thank you for your time and consideration." My children and I are asking for your help and to please support this project and make it a reality. Thank you for your time and consideration. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your comment. City Clerk Consales, anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none, mayor. We did have a written public comment um, from Ms. Tina. She has actually just uh, read our comment out loud. But that was available to the council before tonight's meeting as received and a copy um, at the podium for those wishing for a copy.
Perfect. With that, I close public comment and we move on to the next item.
We now move on to consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council. May request an item to be removed from the consent calendar and it will be considered separately.
Thank you for that. I bring it back to my colleagues for any current concerns or questions or comments. I see none. I open it for public comment. I see no one in the chamber. Anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none, mayor.
With that, I will post public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for a motion and a second.
We approve consent.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Next item, city clerk.
Under workshops, we have item C one, updated intersection control evaluation report for the Lake Street, Fourth Street and Central Avenue intersection.
All right, and that'll be presented by our senior civil engineer, Grumaro. Thank you for joining us. I think you have a couple of items tonight.
I do, thank you. Give me one moment while I get this up, please.
Surely.
Does that look, does that look correct?
Good.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, my name is Jonathan Gromaho. I'm a senior civil engineer. Uh, tonight I will be presenting the Lake Street, Fourth Street, Central Avenue. Uh, we have an updated intersection control evaluation. Presenting with me tonight will be Artivan with uh, GHD. Could you introduce yourself real quick?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Artivan. I'm a senior transportation designer at GHD and the manager is going to this project.
All right, thank you. Uh, moving forward, uh, we have a little bit of an image here so you can see where the location is. Uh, this is that five legged intersection just north of Yosemite Avenue on Lake Street. Let's move a little closer. Uh, this is a five legged intersection, like I said before, uh, that comes with a few uh, difficulties when it comes to design and traffic safety. And those are one of the items that we looked at before in this intersection control analysis. Let's keep moving on. A little bit of background here. In twenty sixteen, the city retained OmniMeans, uh, now GHD. To evaluate long, a long term intersection control alternatives based on current and projected traffic volumes. On February nineteenth of twenty twenty, staff presented the findings of the intersection control evaluation. Uh, in which two alternatives were presented, which is the roundabout and traffic signal. As part of this was a, a no build, which you will see in the report, which is attached. Um, this just shows the conditions um, as an always stop, which it currently exists right now in the future and the current with the current volumes. So at that same meeting on February nineteenth in twenty twenty, uh, due to costs, right away impacts and public feedback, the decision to proceed with the traffic signal design was made. On August twenty first to twenty twenty four, new concerns arose regarding the traffic impacts due to Caltrans. Capital preventive maintenance, CAPM for short, road diet project on Yosemite Avenue. Due to these potential impacts, council directed staff to revisit the roundabout alternative. Uh, as such, on October second of twenty twenty four, council approved forty-five thousand dollars. Um, for amendment number four to the contract with GHD to update the study done in twenty twenty. Some of the results of this update, uh, one of the most significant factors of the roundabout versus traffic signal discussion that was had in twenty twenty. Was the right of way or RW cost for uh, costs and impacts. As part as the update to the study, GHD redesigned the preliminary li- layout of the roundabout. Which significantly decreased the right of way needed for construction of the roundabout alternative. The previous right of way cost from twenty seventeen, adjusted to current prices, was expected to be around one point five million dollars. Uh, GHD was able to optimize the roundabout layout design uh, to reduce this to about sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, now these costs are based on value per square footage only. It does not take into account any staff time. For property acquisition and other related tasks. I'm gonna hand it over now to Artivan. He's gonna get a little bit into the specifics of their study and explain a little bit of the, of the conditions.
Thanks, Jonathan. Can everyone hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Wonderful. The table we're looking at summarizes the existing traffic volumes that were observed as part of a traffic count we conducted back in twenty twenty four. The table shows the existing intersection performance during both the morning and evening peak commute periods. And there are three things that we want to focus here. One is uh, what we call the level of service. Then the delay and then the queuing versus available storage. Uh, just to break down some of the more technical terms for the wider audience, what we refer to as the level of service. In traffic models, that's a standardized way to describe how well a roadway or intersection is operating. And typically it's from the perspective of the user. This is something that's defined uh, in the highway capacity manual. And is often used in a traffic impact studies such as this one. The key points regarding the traffic levels of service or the uh, level of service categories. It's a categorical grade uh, from A through F. I guess this week is back to school week, so you can think of it as a similar to school grade. Um, A level category is a free flow, comfortable driving experience. With the F level category, that's a breakdown of flow, heavy traffic resulting in a not so smooth driving experience. There are some other terms used here. The other one is delayed. That's the average time a driver would spend at the intersection, typically measured in seconds. And then we also have queuing versus storage. That tells us the, uh, if the lines of cars waiting will physically fit within the available. Turn lanes. So if the queues are longer than the available storage, vehicles will spill back into other lanes, creating additional congestion. As part of this analysis, during the AM peak hour, uh, based on our observations and the modeling, the intersection is operating at a level of service between A to B. Which is above the city's performance targets. This means that traffic flows in the morning are generally smooth. Looking at the evening peak hours, however, you can see that the majority of the approaches are operating at a level of service of F. This is the lowest performance category, meaning excessive delays. Highlighting a few examples, the southbound right turn has a queue of about hundred and eighty-six feet, but only sixty-five feet of storage. That's almost three times the demand that the lane can handle. And which results in major spoolbacks into other lanes as well. Similarly, the northeast bound through movement that shows about five hundred feet of queuing compared to only about three hundred feet of available storage. Now, these results highlight that under current conditions, and especially during the evening commute, the intersection is not functioning effectively. And is prone to high levels of congestion. Next slide, please. Um, so this is uh, looking ahead to our twenty forty-five traffic model. Projections, traffic is anticipated to grow by about twenty percent overall in this area. Um, so if you don't make any changes to this intersection, what we're gonna be referring to as a no build alternative in future size. The problems we will see today would only get worse. During the AM peak hour, we already see some movements falling below city's target performance levels. The southbound left and through and the southbound right turn will be both operating at level of service of E with queues exceeding uh, the available storage. Uh, conditions will worsen dramatically in the PM peak hour. Nearly every single approach to the intersection will be at a category F level, resulting in excessive delays. Again, highlighting some of the uh, PM. Peak results, the north, uh, northwest bound left through and right lanes, the queues would be about seven hundred and fifty feet, almost double the available storage. Or the eastbound approach lane, the average delay would be over two minutes per vehicle. With the noble alternative, the key takeaway is that the intersection will be over capacity, especially in the evenings. Vehicles will regularly spill beyond the turn lanes and there will be heavy traffic congestion at this intersection. From a traffic standpoint, the current always stop control is not able to handle the traffic volumes projected in twenty forty-five. Next slide, please. As part of this study, our team also reviewed the alternative of turning the intersection, making it a signalized intersection by adding traffic lights. This slide and the next slide will provide an overview of what that would look like in plan uh, with the northeast corner of the intersection at Fourth Street. At being closed off. There's a little bit of highlighted section at the northwest corner. Uh, of central and uh, lake, and that shows the right of way impacts associated with this option. Uh, some right of way takings would be required in order to expand the corner and be able to meet the ADA requirements with Americans with Disabilities Act. I'll talk about the traffic modeling findings and cost estimate options at later slides, but uh, we present the comparison between the various options. But uh, from a high level perspective, in terms of traffic modeling, the level of service would be a B to C uh, all the way to three twenty forty-five for the signalized option. This acceptable under city's performance targets with category D being that minimum service target. Uh, this is just another overview layout of the traffic signal option showing the proposed geometry, where the curves would be and how the uh, northeast corner would be closed off. Next slide, please. The other alternative that we reviewed was a, a, a single lane roundabout. Uh, originally in twenty twenty, a roundabout alternative was presented that required significant right of way takings, as Jonathan mentioned. This was the result of the overall geometry of the roundabout as well as uh, you had features such as a landscape median separators. In each of the segments as well as the overall circular geometry of the roundabout itself. We had a few consultations with the city and this configuration was optimized through a series of revisions in order to minimize right of way impacts. Next slide, please. Um, this is the revised geometry prepared where the right of way impacts were substantially reduced. And uh, including getting rid of any impacts to any of the structures within the adjacent areas. Under this design, the northeast leg of Fourth Street would be closed off at the alley, simplifying the intersection to four legs. The roundabout has also been designed to accommodate large trucks and buses with a truck apron and providing for special turning accommodations. Uh, I'll get into the performance uh, details later on, but uh, high level, again, this uh, option, this roundabout option. Uh, results in a level of service of A category during both AM and peaks uh, all the way through twenty forty-five. This means that it will be operating freely even with twenty years of anticipated traffic growth. And a traffic standpoint. This would perform much better than the signalized option. Next slide. Uh, yeah, as I mentioned, the original roundabout geometry triggered the need for three full property takings that resulted in approximately twenty thousand square feet of property takings being required. The revised updated design uh, only requires just over five hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, of property acquisitions with no impacts to structures. So it's a significantly more efficient design. When it comes to the right of way perspective. Next slide. Comparing the roundabout option with a signalized intersection in terms of safety, roundabouts drastically reduce conflict points. Meaning fewer opportunities for crashes between vehicles and between vehicles and pedestrians. The signal has thirty-two conflict points while the roundabout has only eight. That's about a seventy-five percent reduction in vehicle conflict points. This information is according to the highway safety manual where their studies show roundabouts could reduce collisions by about seventy-two percent compared to about thirty-nine percent for signals. So while both options may address congestion, the roundabout clearly outforms the signalized option in terms of safety. Next slide. On the topic of safety, a roundabout offers several, several safety benefits over traditional signalized intersection. Uh, first, as I mentioned in this previous slide, fewer conflict points, meaning fewer opportunities for crashes. Vehicle speeds are also much lower in a roundabout that reduces both the likelihood of a crash and the severity of a crash if one does occur. Speed differentials between vehicles are also reduced. Cars generally move slower speeds in roundabouts. And also pedestrians benefit because they only need to cross one direction of traffic at a time and their crossings are typically shorter and narrower. The chart on the right shows why speed is such a critical factor. If a pedestrian is struck by a car at forty miles over per hour, the chance of death is about eighty percent. At thirty miles per hour, it drops around forty and at fifteen miles per hour, it's only closer to fifteen percent. Because roundabouts naturally bring down speeds down to fifteen to twenty miles per hour, this dramatically improves pedestrian survivability and overall intersection safety. So beyond improving traffic flow and reducing delays, the roundabout alternative provides a significant public safety benefit, especially for pedestrians. Next slide. When it comes to traffic performance, the city's target level of service is a D level category or better. Both the traffic signal and the roundabout option will be able to meet the city's traffic performance targets. However, the roundabout alternative will be superior and provide a better level of service from both a traffic standpoint, as I mentioned before, from a safety standpoint. Next slide. Uh, comparing side by side the traffic modeling results of the three options, the first option is the do nothing approach of leaving the intersection as is, along with the signalized option and the roundabout option. Uh, the level of service of the do nothing approach results in an F category level and the P, PM peak hours, which is below the city's performance targets. With the signal in place, our models showed that the intersection will operate at a level of service of between B to C during both peak hours. In twenty twenty-four as well as projected through twenty forty-five conditions. Uh, although this is within the city's target level service, it is lower performance when compared to the roundabout. For performance wise roundabout would be a level category A during both AM and PM peak hours all the way to twenty forty-five. This means that it will be operating freely even after twenty years of projected traffic growth. Next slide. As part of the overall analysis, we also looked at safety and collision related costs when it comes to the various options. This analysis looks at the long term safety impacts of the two alternatives by estimating the annual cost of collisions at intersections. Uh, we use what's called as a crash modification factor or CMF. Uh, this is a measure, uh, the expected reduction in crashes for a given design. We then applied the national values from highway safety manual to estimate the societal cost of crashes, things like the broader community impacts would be. Resulting from a crash. When we run the numbers, the traffic signal, it results in an annual collision cost of about twenty thousand dollars. A roundabout reduces that to just over nine thousand dollars. That is a fifty percent reduction in crash related costs year after year. It's important to remember that it's not just about the dollars. These costs present real impacts, fewer severe crashes, fewer injuries and improved safety. Next slide, please. I'll pass it back to the city to present the uh, comparative costs of the various options. Thanks for your time, Jonathan. Back to you.
Thank you, Artivan. Uh, yeah, so let's get into the costs of this. Um, as we can see, the traffic signal and uh, roundabout alternative, we have a few different costs here. Um, going down from design, right away and construction costs, including staff costs. Um, right of way costs tend to be relatively close. Um, design costs, we're looking at. The design for the traffic signals about ninety percent, uh, which means I, I estimate maybe about twenty thousand dollars more to complete that design. Whereas the roundabout alternative, we're looking around four eighty. Uh, I will mention uh, for the signal design for PSNE and environmental that we've done for the signal design, we're about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Into that design as of right now. The construction costs for the trap signal and roundabout, we have about two point one million for the traffic signal. And the reason why this number is a little bit higher is because the traffic signal also includes a road rehabilitation work. Uh, includes medians and includes some concrete work um, to close off the fourth street leg. Uh, the roundabout alternative is about three point two million for construction. Um, so for a total of two point one six for the trap signal and three point seven three for the roundabout approximately. So in summary, the updated twenty twenty-four traffic analysis projects a twenty percent volume increase by twenty forty-five. It evaluates three alternatives, the no build, traffic signal and roundabout. Uh, the roundabout would provide the best long term operational performance, uh, level of service of A in the AM and P and the PM peaks. Uh, it improves safety by reducing conflict points and has reduced right of way impacts compared to earlier designs. Though it removes forty parking spaces versus twenty-nine parking spaces for the traffic signal. And again, in summary, the estimated cost, two point one six million for traffic signal and three point seven four million for the roundabout. Um, I did also want to mention that the roundabout is budgeted in the CIP budget uh, with CMAC, RSTP and Measure T and LTF funds at this time. Uh, in closing, our recommendation. Uh, in closing, our recommendation is that city council consider the information within the intersection control evaluation report. And provide direction to staff regarding course of future activity. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. I'll bring it back to my colleagues for any questions or concerns. Councilmember Montez.
Question or, and I guess this doesn't matter which option we go, uh, with the exception of the do nothing, right? Um, during construction for either, uh, what is the, the timeframe, right? We're going to divert traffic because we're going to also go on a road diet on Yosemite, so that's going to impact. That, do we have any mitigation or is everybody going to go around to Central, uh, through Central to Gateway? Is, what is the alternative there? You're on a road diet on Yosemite, you shut down traffic on Lake, your other alternative is what? Gateway?
Yeah, so for the traffic signal, uh, road rehab work can be fairly quick. Uh, sometimes the impact of a traffic signal can be minimal to the traffic going through short of um, select timeframes. The road, the roundabout has to be a reconstruction of the entire roadway, so that would have more of an impact on, on traffic. As for where we would reroute the traffic, um, potentially Cleveland over up at uh, Tozer and Yosemite Avenue. Or we, I think we would have to go to um. See, A Street or something like that, yeah.
B Street? D, okay, D Street.
Probably D Street.
Across the river, yeah.
So one of the challenges is we have a limitation on bridges. Um, and so I believe most people would probably use D Street. Um, I think you would probably even have some people potentially driving all the way to Gateway, depending on where they're going on, on the north side of town.
Um, well, I just want to say like, I, I would be in favor of the roundabout. I know it is expensive. We do have the amounts budgeted and it'll keep us at a much higher level of service through twenty forty-five. Not, not to mention the cost. I mean, I feel like the presentation was, was, you know, stressing that point, the cost of, you know, reducing accidents. And, and again, it's not just the dollars, it's staff time that PD has to go out there, paramedics fire. And then the, the community is going to be impacted by that, right? Um, not having an accident, it's hard to quantify, right? It's hard to tell somebody, hey, remember that accident that you had the other day? No, you know, you're welcome, right? But uh, those are things that I think there'd be beneficial to the community. And my opinion would be uh, moving to the roundabout, especially since we've got those costs from right of way takings um, down. But what you said, one point five million?
Yes, yeah, adjusted to today's dollars, about one point five.
That's, that's huge for me. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to the comment about Gateway, Gateway can't, sometimes the, the train stops. So that would not be really a, um, just to, to keep that in mind that that's not really a very consistent alternative. Um, for the study, was there um, more data on the wait time to cross four pedestrians?
I'm sorry, uh.
Similar to the, to the vehicle one you mentioned.
The wait time for pedestrian crossings?
Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, since we're closing the fourth street leg, um, the roundabout would have shorter crossing legs. Since we go from, uh, you go from um, the curb ramp to the median island. It kind of gives you a break between the crossing times and then you get to continue forward. So most crossings would be at most, I would imagine about fifteen feet or so. Um, now that, that depends on the design of the roundabout, uh, whereas the traffic signal. You know, you press the button, you wait, it's going to be about fifty feet for your crossing, pedestrian crossing. So it would be quicker pedestrian crossing times for the roundabout.
Oh, okay, oh, actual.
Quite your question.
No, I was, I was wondering about actual, how you studied the, the vehicles, like now, as of now.
Oh, so we did uh, traffic counts uh, for the intersection. So we gathered data for how many uh, vehicles are approaching from each leg and where they're going, left, right, through, uh, whatever that might be. Um, and then we applied those, we applied a growth rate on those from the MCTC. That allowed us to look at our future twenty forty-five um, vehicle counts as well. And if there's more specific, uh, maybe Artavan can get into exactly how that, that study is done.
Okay, and then for the, um, for the AM peak hour, about the times, like about what time is that?
Artavan, is there a specific time for the AM peak hour or PM hours that you?
Believe it was eight AM, I have to check the ICE report, but I can confirm that.
Okay.
Typically, it's uh, between eight AM and about five PM.
Yeah, I don't have the exact time, but it's typically eight AM is the uh, the PM, the AM peak.
I, I, I think you're hearing the actual peak hour. The counts are typically taken between seven AM and nine AM. So you can go ahead and catch every, every intersection in town varies in terms of what the peak hour is. And then the evening is usually four to six. Uh, when you take, count those hours, you look for the, the peak for fifteen minute periods.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the reason why I was asking that, because, well, that's actually my district and a lot of the residents there are farm workers. So um, three, three in the morning, five in the morning is probably what you would see more uh, people. And um, my concern is also the last loss of parking because I know that a lot of um, residents there. Um, they rely a lot on their vehicles um, to be able to make it to work. Um, but those are just some of my concerns, though I do understand um, the consideration for the roundabout. In terms of it being safer, it decreasing the impact, the impacts that would cause on pedestrians. And other um, drivers in the long term, so thank you.
All your comments, okay. Um, I can kind of, I have it, I printed it. So peak hours are from seven thirty AM to eight thirty AM and um, evening four forty-five to five forty-five. But the count periods are from seven to nine AM and two to six PM are the counts. And if you look at the counting that we got, the graph, um, we have several cars coming through in the evening, not as many, almost half in the AM. We don't have any, many pedestrians crossing throughout the date. I was really surprised with the counts for that. And um, big trucks, uh, medium trucks, they were really low and I'm, I'm on that road a lot. I was surprised to see the counts were low for that too. Um, but it was great data, great to see, great to review. Um, because I've been in that, that line two minutes back trying to, to get on Lake Street, so I understand this concern. I um, am concerned about losing parking spaces, but again, it's not a matter of a parking space. It's not a matter of a dollar, it's a matter about safety for our community and what's going to be the overall. As we would say in school, a grade and um, school teacher, an A is better than what we're looking at an F if we do nothing. Um, so for me, I am swaying towards the roundabout. But um, if I do have another colleague that would like to make a comment, and then if that, if somebody would like to motion for direction for staff. Or where we want to go from here, and I'll give Mayor Pro Tim a few minutes. Rodriguez, go ahead.
Did you have a comment, Shannon?
It's okay. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Gagos. Again, I just wanted to echo the same um, comments that were made by my colleagues. Thank you for the presentation. This was brought to us uh, um, not too far back, and I think we saw the level of service. That's kind of why we brought the roundabout back into the, the design process here. Um, the way I look at it, I think downtown had similar issues where we were looking to make some cutbacks on design because of budgetary. But this council, this body here decided to move forward and push that. Um, because we had the, the, the funds to, to be able to do that. I think in this case, as you alluded to, that we have that already budgeted for. So I think it would be a, a great investment uh, for that uh, sector of our community. Again, the level of service, you can't beat that over twenty forty-five. Um, yes, it's going to lose some spaces, but at the end of the day, it's about safety. And it's about how you move vehicles around. We don't know what's going to happen with vehicles in twenty forty-five. We hope that there's probably more uh, uh, active transportation, but nevertheless. This is an issue that we face and we want to make sure we provide the best level of service. So with that, um, I too am in favor. Before I make that motion, I'll, I'll let you open that up to public comment. Thank you, Mayor Gagos.
Thank you. Our city attorney has a comment first before I do that.
I'm sorry, I just want to confirm that there's an opportunity for public comment on this item. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I see no more questions from my colleague. I opened up to public comment. Anyone in the chamber? City Clerk Gonzalez, anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay, with that, I close public comment. I bring it back to my colleagues for direction for our staff.
So again, this is requesting direction, so I would uh, make a motion uh, that we move to the roundabout uh, uh, design. That was presented before.
I get that.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Senior Civil Engineer Gamaro. I think you've got your direction.
Thank you.
We appreciate all that hard work. And GHD Design Consultant, Artvan, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Next item, City Clerk Gonzalez.
Item D one is amendment number three to the West Coast Arborist Agreement for Citywide Tree Management and Maintenance. Maintenance Services and Budget Amendment to the Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-Five Twenty-Six.
Thank you for that. That will be presented by our Parks Director, Abir. Welcome.
Bye.
Don't know why I'm having trouble. I always have trouble. Alrighty, Joe Abear, Parks Director, presenting item D one. Uh, Madam Mayor, council members, guests. I feel like I'm presenting on senior night again. I fit, fit right into that, so it's all good. Before I start, I just want to bring to your attention, there is a typo in your staff report on page three. Uh, it references amendment, the first amendment as, and it should say the third amendment, so it's a minor. But I want to put that on the record. So let's go ahead and get started. Uh, during the last several weeks, staff has been made aware of a tree maintenance needed along Main Berry Drive and West Third. And the West Gate Drive medians. Uh, the, we have a contractor service agreements with West Coast Arborist Inc. Uh, reaching its maximum amount for the year. Staff is recommending, I don't remember, get ordered to summering. But anyway, it's a maximum amount of thirty-nine, additional thirty-nine nine to cover the necessary work. This would constitute the third amendment to the agreement. Uh, the city utilizes a tree maintenance contractor to oversee the perform and perform various tasks related to the city's urban forests. Uh, this is due to the city's responsibility for maintaining street, street trees with the, the public right of way. As well as trees within parks, landscape maintenance districts and open spaces and city facilities and other public spaces. Uh, on November third, you might remember this, in twenty twenty-one, uh, we approved a, a service agreement with West Coast Arborist. For uh, tree maintenance. The agreement was for three years and a hundred fifty thousand dollars per year. On June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, we approved another amendment, an amendment to this agreement approving an additional eighteen thousand eight hundred. For the removal and pruning of several trees at Lionstown and Country Park. Uh, I think this was in conjunction with a, the baseball tournament that we were having at the, at the park. Uh, again, on October second, twenty twenty-four, we approved amendment number two, which extended the agreement for an additional two years. As allowable per the terms, the agreement was increased to two hundred thousand per year. Uh, several reasons for it, for that requesting these additional funds. Earlier this year, as some of you might know, there's a large tree branch fell along Main Berry Drive in the median. Uh, the entire tree was removed in July of this year. Uh, what we found out by consulting with an arborist was that the tree had been affected by a rotting trunk. And the tree was beyond repair, uh, as the rot was extensive. Well, we also learned, which was a learning experience for myself and the mayor as well. Uh, the tree, uh, the tree type uh, also played a role as the tree was a type of ash, which is, has a finite lifespan. And is prone to bark splitting at the base and falling limbs. Uh, it was during, uh, during the inspection of trees on Main Berry Drive. That the immediate neighboring area along West Gate Drive and West Third Street also became a focus. As the medians in this area have the same tree type and similar conditions. All trees along the median in this area are ash trees. The arborist has recommended that all trees on the median of West Main Berry Drive and West Gate Drive and West Third. Be pruned or trimmed to prevent future damage and branch breakage by reducing the weight on heavy extended limbs, thus preventing limb failure. Uh, this is about, works, it's about a hundred fifty trees that we're talking about. Uh, you can kind of see some of the areas uh, that, these are the trees, these are the trees that need trimming and pruning. Uh, the trees are on a five-year cycle for trimming. The last time they were trimmed was twenty twenty-one. Unfortunately, the trees didn't, didn't wait for us. They didn't follow our cycle. They have their own cycle, so we're a little, got a little bit ahead of ourselves. Um, and they, the arborist has recommended that we move forward in advances. Uh, we, uh, we have limitations of doing this in-house. Uh, it requires specialized equipment that we don't have and it requires arborist expertise for the trimming and pruning. As you know, as we've gone through this before, where we, we had people trimming trees that didn't have this expertise. And I think we want to avoid that moving forward. Uh, you can kind of see the area, uh, shows roughly the hundred fifty trees and that will be trimmed and pruned. Uh, the financial impact is, as I mentioned, uh, it, the quote provided is uh, thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, the balance on the current agreement is slated to be expended through October twenty twenty-five. The uh, agreement uh, that was approved earlier, uh, it renews again in November uh, for the two hundred thousand. So we have the runway from here to November, but uh, I don't know that we really want to wait to November and just risk another branch falling. Uh, now staff is recommending that we use general fund balance to cover this, this cost. The trees in the area are not part of the districts, the land maintenance districts, rather, they are in the city's designated medians. Uh, thus utilizing the LMD budget is not, that's not an option. While the city may wait, like I said, the concern is that the cost of trimming has increased. And that's, this one-time budget allot allocation will mitigate the issue at hand. My, our recommendation is that we adopt a resolution approving this third amendment to the agreement for tree management and maintenance services. Uh, with West Coast Arborist for the, the stated amount. And we adopt a resolution amending the city's fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six operating budget. Approving the expenditure line item for execution of a third amendment to the agreement for tree maintenance services within. With West Coast Harvest for the additional amount, thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. And I'm saying in my presentation, I'm open for any questions.
I will bring it back to my colleagues, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Uh, thank you, Eric Gagos, and again, thank you Director Abear for your presentation. Um, when I first came onto council, I came onto council when the city was actively in a conservation mode here. And what water conservation that is. Um, and a lot of these trees along, um, not only Third Street, West Gate and Main Berry endured a lot of the uh, um. The restrictions with water. So um, it was good that Parks was able to save some of these, as you can see, some of those trees were pulled out. But again, because of infection, mistletoe and what have you. Um, but over the years, these trees have come back to life, especially Main Berry, which is a district that I represent. And also um, uh, member Sacariah and obviously your mayor that also lives alongside Main Berry. But this is a very um, uh, a, a, a street that is, uh, traffic comes by quite often. Um, not only through events such as Halloween, uh, Christmas and what have you, but it, it is a um, um. It's essential to keep a lot of these trees, not only in this area, but all over the city. I just think, uh, I, I want to thank uh, um, the, the parks uh, uh, for, for taking the initiative. And um, I was present when that tree branch fell there and I saw it come down as I was going to work. But um, it's good that we can start taking the initiative and making sure that we're proactive and not having these trees fall back to some disease. And, and I'm sorry to hear that they're ash. I didn't know the life expectancy, but uh, hopefully with the pruning. We'll ever to extend more life on that too. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez, Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for the presentation, Joe. Uh, it seems like this was brought to the attention of the city. I'm wondering if we have a process to check on the trees throughout the city to anticipate these expenses in the future. Yeah, all over Madera.
Yeah, actually, what we have is, uh, with their on a regular schedule, we have the city broken up into quadrants. Uh, for, for some reason though, the, I don't know why, it seems like we've had more. For some reason, though, the, I don't know why, it seems like we've had more issues as far as tree trimming, just unexpected, unanticipated. We spent a sizable amount over at Millview Park, trimming a big tree over there and some other trees as well in the city, where we've had other branches fall. But we are in a, like I said, quadrants, and they do have a regular schedule. I think I kind of was being facetious, but the trees aren't cooperating with our schedule. So we're trying to go through and just, you know, I'm learning a lot about trees in this. I didn't realize that, I think I was, I asked a dumb question. We're out there, I said, well, how long do trees last? And they said, you know, they last as long as, there's a lot of factors. It could be how, you know, how well, how spaced they are, how often you trim them, or the type of tree, type of tree it is, which hasn't, doesn't have a finite life, which is what these particular ash trees are. So we've been kind of more, more cognizant of this as we go along, and that's what we're actually, we've been more engaged with our arborists than we probably have in the past to kind of give us some advice. I mean, that, that one huge tree, I don't, I didn't know a whole lot about trees that was over at the park, over at the Millview Park. But I was like, man, this is a huge tree, and that's, that's a, that's a hazard just waiting to happen. So we actually did have them come in. I think it's probably the biggest tree in the city. And we did have them trim that, just because we realized that there is probably a loss, potential loss, it was going to fall on somebody. So that, we're, we're a lot more intentional about looking at trees now than we were in the past.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Mejia. Councilmember Sacaria.
Joe, thanks for the report. Just, so with Main Berry, that section seems to be, I would say, a more congested area when it comes to trees. Is there a plan going forward to have a removal of, because you're saying spacing kind of helps with that? Is that ever been a recommendation to say every other tree needs to go, or?
We haven't gotten that far. I think our immediate need right now was, hey, what do we do about this potential disaster? But I think moving forward, we, you know, we can consult the arborist to say, hey, look, you know, should we, you know, in order to mitigate any future problems, should we space these out better? I mean, we're, we're, right now, I think we're paying for some of the sins of the past, where I'm not sure the planning was, was all that thought, thought out well to say, hey, you know, you got tree, 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 tree. And it seems very congested to me. It's beautiful when they're in bloom. But at the same time, there's also some risks associated, so.
Out of any of those, are there, is, do we know yet if anything is going to be necessary to be removed? Or is this already, they're just going to trim a hundred and fifty, and that's going to be it?
Well, we're going to, we're going to trim those right now. I think that's the immediate thing. And I think moving forward, we'll, we'll look and investigate and see what the arborist recommends. But again, one of the things I think he did mention was, hey, why did you put this type of ash? You know, it's that certain type of ash. And again, it's a, it's a learning process for myself, and so we're going to get there.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, I open up for public comment. I see no one in the chamber. Anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you for that. I close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for an adoption of D1.
I'll move to approve Item D1.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Parks Director Abir for that report. Next item.
Item D2, Contract Award for Water Main Replacement City Project W43.
And we have back Senior Civil Engineer Gamaro to give us this wonderful report.
Thank you. I didn't, I'm glad I had a quick little break in between. All right, yeah. Good evening again, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jonathan Gamaro. This is, I'm presenting tonight also the Contract Award for Water Main Replacement Project, City Project Number Forty-three. So a little bit of background, the Water Main Replacement Project was identified in the March twenty twenty-one Sewer and Water Renewal and Replacement Plan as part of a five-year program, replacement program. Goal was to proactively replace high-risk pipelines and maintain a high level of service for existing customers. The city engineer executed a task order with Proverston Pritchard Engineering under the On-Call Engineering Services Agreement for Design Services. The first bid package designed under Proverston Pritchard was City Project W43, with the remaining projects under that five-year plan at fifty percent complete. So the project aims to replace all the water utilities within the state Route 145 in the downtown area of Madera. This is because we're trying to do it in advance of the Caltrans Capital Preventive Maintenance, CAPN for short, Road Diet Project that's slated for construction in January twenty twenty-six. The replacement of the water main includes on Lake Street, also from Riverside Drive to Yosemite Avenue, which is also in advance of City Project R57, the Fourth Street, Lake Street, Central Avenue, as we want to replace any water utilities underneath there as well. Now that we are moving forward towards the roundabout, we don't want to tear up any of that new improvement with replacing water lines. It includes an additional little section of water main replacement on State Route 145 or Madera Avenue, just south of Eldorado Avenue Drive. So a quick little map of the area. So north is to your left. This is the section on Madera Avenue, south of Eldorado. And then we pick up here at Madera Avenue and Gateway, travel all the way to Yosemite Avenue here, and we follow all the way up to Story Road, just at city limits. And like I mentioned before, we have Lake Street all the way to Riverside Drive and Yosemite Avenue. So a little bit about the project bidding. We released it to bids on June eighteenth via Planet Bids, our new bidding portal. The project was advertised in the Madera Tribune as well on the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth, and we received five bids on August sixth. Little overview of the bids received. The bids range between four point four, five million and five point one, I mean, nine million. The engineer's opinion of cost was about five point one million, so we had two that were underneath our estimate of cost. So in summary, the lowest bid was MidCal Pipelines and Utilities Inc. They submitted the lowest bid at four point four, four nine million. They met all the bidder documentation requirements and was selected as the lowest responsive and responsible. We are recommending an allowance of twenty percent of the contract amount for contingencies. This is due to the age of the water system in the downtown area. In some areas, we estimate up to about seventy-five years old for some of these water lines that can provide a lot of unknown conditions and problems during construction. And the project is funded with water utility funds. So our recommendation is to approve the Contract Award for the Water Main Replacement Project, City Project Number W43, in the amount of four million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars to MidCal Pipelines and Utilities Inc.
Thank you for that report. I will bring it back to my colleagues for any comments or concerns. Councilmember Montez.
Question, and it just kind of popped in my head, because we've had some issues lately. But, so for regarding contingencies, right? And maybe this is a question for the city manager. If the contractor, obviously, if there's something that's unexpected, right? That's what the contingency would cover. But if the contractor does something that was, I don't want to say not part of the job, but maybe they make a mistake, is that still something that we would cover? But their contingency, would that be something that we would say, hey, contractor, you did this, you're responsible for? Or we would say, okay, this is cost of doing business, and then we would cover it?
If an error is made on the contractor's part during construction, or something is constructed not per plans without approval, then they would be on the contractor's dime to correct that.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Great question. I see no other comments or questions. I open it up for public comment. I see no one in the house. Do we have anybody online or on Zoom?
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. I close, I close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for an adoption. A motion and a second.
Make a motion to approve, do you want?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your report. Moving on to administrative reports, we have E1, a Domestic Well Mitigation Program. DWWP action on this item for the GSA Groundwater Sustainable Agency, and this will be given by our Director of Engineering, Health Ops. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Anyway, again, thank you. This is the domestic.
Hold on, Director of Engineering. We don't have it on our screens. In the city, we make you click like five, six things. Cole, get ready. It's not easy. And we do this to make sure that the folks at home can see everything that we see.
So you have to hit F3, F2, backspace, forwardspace. There you go, Keith. You're ready to go.
No, I have instructions. I just screwed up the last part of it. I'll start this by saying thank you again. Anyway, this is Domestic Well Mitigation Program, Item E1. A little bit of background on this. The Groundwater Sustainability Planner, the GSP, requires groundwater sustainability agencies to attain groundwater sustainability by the year twenty forty. This applies to the sub-basin as a whole, rather than by GSA or GSP. The requirement was based upon staff understanding a trade-off between immediate balance of the sub-basin versus recognition that water table would drop for a while before GSP projects and programs resulted in stabilization. I mean, sustainability might have resulted in economic hardship with sub-basin. This is generally a repeat from past council meetings, but I do think it's important to go ahead and repeat some of this from time to time. More of the background, the memorandum of understanding, or MOU, between GSAs to establish a domestic well mitigation program, or DWMP, was included in the revised GSP submitted on, submitted to the state on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three to the Department of Water Resources, the DWR. The MOU was not a commitment. It discusses potential mitigation measures, but it does commit GSAs to working together. Since the council meeting of April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, the GSA Coordination Work Group, and I'll refer to that as Work Group moving forward, has met three times, working towards the DWMP. Four of the GSAs met separately on August thirteenth as a result of a possible impasse in discussions amongst the work, amongst the work group. The work group has seven GSAs, and we reduce that down to four to talk amongst ourselves. This report is essentially broken into two major categories. First is the work group. That meeting occurred about a month ago. The breakout meeting occurred literally last week on Wednesday or Thursday. The Domestic Well Mitigation Program, again, DWMP. The DWMP, when complete, is intended to assist domestic and municipal well owners that include providing bottled water, thirty-five thousand dollars towards drilling a new well. At present, this continues to be seen as just a hole in the ground, not the equipment. It's not intended to reverse for wells that were at the end of the life or for other reasons such as wear and tear. The DWMP would remain in effect until twenty forty, when the sub-basin reaches sustainability. Similar to the last council update, there are seven GSAs and at least two sets of opinions on how DWMP costs should be assigned or shared, with the differences seemingly solidified. We are essentially in two camps right now between the GSAs. There was the proximity-based approach. There are three GSAs that appear to be fixed on this with statements of intent to form their own DWMP. Those GSAs are Gravelly Ford, Root Creek, and the New Stone Water Districts. The proportional-based approach, which has four GSAs, the four GSAs are party to the joint GSP, and that includes the city. Those are the City Madera, County Madera, Madera Irrigation District, and the Madera Water District. Status thus far, are the three GSAs intend to form their own DWMP? Two have indicated that they are open to continuing and participating in preparing the DWMP. The third has indicated that they have no desire to participate in that process. I anticipate they're still going to show up to the means. I don't know what that means, if they show up to the means. As a result of a query, a query from the work group mediator, the DWR, seems to defer the principle of local, to the principle of local control. It has not indicated inability of individual GSAs having their own DWMP, nor has it advocated towards a specific method. Essentially, that, the discussion with the DWR has left us in a position where several GSAs feel like they can go on their own. These facts may leave, facts may leave the work group at an impasse at the moment. Now, the proportional-based approach, council provides direction to staff that only supports a proportional basis for sharing costs. That direction was based upon a city net recharge of negative twenty-six hundred feet. In other words, we use twenty-six hundred feet more than we recharge. Sub-basin wide net recharge is negative one hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred acre feet. Proportionately, the city represents about two point two four percent of that. That's based upon a model. It's through about a year ago. The city has improved, I think, well, we've improved in the last year or so with projects that we've completed. If Root Creek were to pull out, they have seven percent of the cost. That's seven percent, depends upon how many wells they actually have in their GSA area. That seven percent may be spread amongst the four other GSAs that have an impact. The city projects within the GSP are over ninety-nine point five percent complete. Those projects are the Berry Basin, that's a recharge basin. It's a partnership between the city and the Madera Irrigation District, and then the water meters. We're ninety-nine point, I can go higher than ninety-nine point seven five, but we are, we're mostly done. And I'll give a couple more specifics later. Dry wells within the city last year are four. That's going back to September twenty-third of twenty twenty-four. Dry wells within the Madera sub-basin itself is thirty-two. Six of those have occurred in the last month. And this is, this is kind of typical. As we get towards the end of the summer, the water table is continuing to drop before it starts to recover. So the six isn't necessarily surprising. What is maybe surprising to me is the total is thirty-two. Based upon what our model, your modeler suggests, we probably would be right around a hundred or so for the last year. Now, the value of mitigating those four wells is a hundred and forty thousand dollars plus management cost. That's thirty-five thousand dollars per well, and then whatever it costs to manage the program. To exceed the hypothetical cost on the proximity-based approach, we would need to see two hundred wells within the sub-basin going dry. Recent dry well notifications continue to show less, significantly less than to two hundred. We're at thirty-two at the moment. The cost that's been, I think I'm going to go ahead and jump ahead just real quickly. I've debated about whether I've got the, the table in the right spot where I want to go ahead and talk about it. This is a table that was prepared by the consultant that prepared the GSP for us. It shows the calculation as to what they think the proportionate share for the various GSA should be based upon the, the net recharge. Madera County was sixty-nine percent, MID nineteen, Madera Water District, three, City Madera, two, and then Root Creek, seven. Seven wants to do their own DWMP. Then the other two are shown as zero. Down at the bottom of the table, you see total capital cost of seven point one million in the first year, FYE twenty twenty-six, and administrative costs of seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Let's see, I'm actually in the next category here. Anyway, the cost is based upon two categories, the capital and admin operating. The cost changes by year based upon the consultant model of changes in water well impacts. I'm going to jump ahead in my mind here right now, real quick, because I have a number that I'm going to present eventually anyway. Right now, there's a backlog of about two hundred and twenty wells that have gone dry. There's anticipation that those, that those owners will be looking for mitigation at some point in the future, probably after the DWMP is put in place. The model and in the GSP updated report, there's six hundred, so there's six hundred and one or six hundred and eleven wells anticipated to go dry in the next five years. The cost that you see in the table on the next slide is based upon those anticipate, the backlog and the anticipation. is based upon those anticipate, the backlog and the anticipated wells going dry. And the table shows a cost of $156,000, $157,000 in the first year as a high, and then there's a low of around $105,000. I calculated this earlier. It's about $34 million in anticipated well costs in the next five years. Then I should note, some GSAs believe participation should be based equally on the DWMP based upon the state mandate. Based upon this approach, the city costs were in excess of $175,000. I'm not hearing any of the GSAs saying that it must be split equally with regard to management costs of the DWMP. And to be clear, these are just estimates based upon the model. We're not all, we're not all agreeing to that, that they're fully accurate. Now, we have the table again. The current stated position with the workgroup. The city would like to see share based on current status of projects rather than previous data within the water model. Again, we've moved forward since the last calculations, and we're close to being done. Staff has noted support or acceptance of this, but the draft DWMP has not mirrored that. The draft DWMP is attached to the report, and it shows something different. City supports a proportional approach. City does not support proximity. Staff has indicated support for many, if not all, aspects of the current draft DWMP. When you look at the plan, it looks good. It's got a lot of specifics in there, say what we want to look for in a dry, confirm it's a dry well. But when you get down to it, that report is, or that plan is complicated, and it takes time to go ahead and work through. If we hire somebody as a group to look at a request, they have to look through a lot of things to figure out whether we should mitigate a well. Council consideration. Approach preference. Now, the proportional has been confirmed. Do we accept the model at 2%? Later on, I'll recommend that we're at 1%. Draft agreement also states proportional responsibility will be based on a five-year basis. The plan, or actually the agreement between the GSAs suggests five-year, but I'm not hearing anybody necessarily fixed on five-year right now. The breakout meeting, you're going to hear different things. But this is based upon what I've been hearing at the, at the workgroup meetings. Accepts the estimated cost of between 142 and 95 on the capital and 14, 295.06 on the admin operating. I don't necessarily agree with that. Staff doesn't agree with it. Recommended action, city seek, is that city seek immediate recognition of completed projects round as near as whole percentage greater than zero. At present, that would be 1%, not 2%. Revisit the share calculation for capital costs based upon completed projects one year following execution of the agreement with the other GSAs. The city anticipates completion of the projects within that time. At this time, I'm going to say we have 125 meters left to install. We believe that's conservatively high. Our project manager on a regular basis is going out and checking the remaining properties that are on a flat rate and finding that. He's consistently finding the flat-rate properties that already have meters. Participated administrative costs for a minimum timeframe of five years at 1% based upon the belief by some GSA representatives that this aspect of DWMP is mandated on all. After the conversation that our mediator had with the state, I'm not sure that anything is fixed. So if we were going to split the management equally, that's a possibility. If we're going to split the management by, you know, if we're going to go ahead and call it 1%, that's a possibility. But I'm looking for council direction on how I go with that, and how firmly do we stay with that? Now, for the separate GSA discussion. Now, this occurred because it was obvious at the last workgroup meetings that we were starting to go nowhere. We had multiple GSAs, well, we had three GSAs that do not want to go ahead and do the fair share participation or the proportional participation. We're just not going to be there. So we broke out and we talked about that. I talked about where we were. And this is the discussion. It's broken down into bullet points. That was an hour worth of talking, while the other meetings have been hours and hours worth of talking. So the highlights that should be considered preliminary include all four GSAs that a separate DWMP appears to be required. We all agree that a DWMP is required. With Root Creek expressing its desire to create its own DWMP, their calculated 7% probably needs to be spread somewhere. Quite literally, I don't have those answers in terms of how many wells are in each separate GSA. But they feel like they can manage those and mitigate them themselves. Some GSAs, in addition to city, feel the calculated splits do not account for GSP projects completed in advance of that plan for in their joint GSP. That's not just the city right now. That's also the Madera Irrigation District. They feel like there should be an adjustment. Taken separately, appears the other GSAs either support or at the very least do not object to the lesser proportion share that being assigned to the city. The proposal was presented at that meeting that only addresses the first year, and that draft cost distribution only be used as guidance for a fixed amount being applied to each agency. These are the amounts that were brought up at the meeting. MID currently has a total of about $1.5 million based upon that table that I've shown. MWD is somewhere around 250,000. City Madera is 156,000, and the county is 5.5 million dollars. The county was at this meeting, of course, and they've expressed deep concerns over this particular. This is a proposal. I don't know that'll be hold, that will hold. There's been a couple emails going back and forth talking about that. And subsequent to the meeting, there was a proposal that only 50% of either a one-year value or the value from the consultant in that table be used. So I'm seeing possibilities bouncing around. And with help from council, I'll have an idea where we want to go when those meetings continue.
Mind if I ask a question there?
Sure.
So the amounts are proportionate to the amount of projects completed through the GSP from every GSA? Or are they proportionate to what they draw from the aquifer?
They are proportionate, what they have in that table is proportionate to what they draw from the aquifer or the overdraft from the aquifer.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, the other three agencies that do not want to partake, did they express a certain, do we have why they felt they didn't want to participate?
They have. They believe that the number of, that the wells that they have within their GSA suggests that their cost would be, it would be cheaper for them to go that way. I think, as an example, the New Stone Water District, they may have only one private well in their jurisdiction. If they have only one private well and they show a 0% participation per that table, they don't want to be participating to whatever number that might be, even though even though that table does show them at 0% across the board.
I see as far as their percentage of what they, the deficit on their part with the aquifer.
Yeah.
Okay.
The model's just showing there's no impacts on that and.
But I don't blame, right? I mean, is that fair to say?
I'm sorry?
I don't blame them?
Oh, I don't blame them either. Well, actually, I'm not sure whether I should blame them or not. There has been, I have had the belief that the state is requiring the the Madera sub-basin do this. We are all in this together. If we're not in it together and we're all acting as separate GSAs, then we might have a problem. It means, based upon the state's statement or the DWR, based upon their statement, just about anybody can do anything they want so long as the water wells are mitigated to their standard. Now, if we're all doing our separate thing, and if there's a question, it'll have to be resolved. How is that resolved? I don't know. But yes, I do agree. It makes sense for them to go ahead and on the basis of costs, they don't want to participate.
And I'm sorry, I know you're going to explain this, but I want to make sure that I or maybe my colleagues also are aware that at what point could the Department of Water Resource Board get involved and say, well, you're not submitting your plan or your projects as presented in your plan. Therefore, we then will, will enforce it or will take over. Is that even a possibility?
It's a possibility. I don't know how real it is. The, there is a belief, and somebody probably researched, there is a belief that we do have to have the DWMP in place by the end of this year. So that's my time of essence statement in the report. We want to go ahead and figure out what that is, and then figure out how to mitigate. I think our hardest part right now is beyond coming up with a program is figuring out how we would manage that. Because we want to be able to go ahead and intake a well or multiple dry wells and immediately, or as quickly as possible, determine whether they are eligible for the mitigation amount of 35,000, whether we need to provide them water until we give them the payment. And then we, you know, well, it's not really discussed. You know, we want to go ahead and if they have a, if they have a valid request, we want to get the water to them, then it's behoven upon the DWMP or the GSAs to go ahead and get them that 35,000 as quickly as possible. After that, this is the part that may be vague. If they can't afford to do the well, and it takes them a while, do we keep providing them water? It's an interesting question. We've seen wells that, well, one well recently outside the city where they came to the city requesting permission to drill a well. We don't, as, by policy, we don't generally agree with that proposal. If they can connect to the city and it's more cost-effective, to connect to the city, they should extend the water line or connect. But in this case, the state has a program that says they'll pay for it, but they won't pay for extension of water well. So we were at an impasse on that particular one. But one of the weird things about that was we found out that they were dry for two years before they made requests to the city. Why that was, we don't know. But you look at the aerial photos and you see the green parcel just outside the city go dry. All the trees are dead and everything. But they waited for two years.
Thank you.
There's, continuing along. Anyway, the table, as we believe, well, we know, includes a backlog of 220 wells that will possibly seek mitigation. Assumes a certain number of future dry wells. That number appears to be 601 dry wells between 2025 and 2029. So total for the first year is about 7.8 million, and the table goes through and it's 8.35 and the 5.2. That's about 34, 35 million. I don't think it's going to get there. What I believe is, we contribute, the GSAs contribute $35,000 per well, but the property owner has to be able to pay for the rest of the water well. We're not going to be paying for everything. So I tend to think that the 220 wells won't be immediate. They've been holding out this long. How long will they hold out? That's my last two bullets on that. Now, the $80,000 proposed, approximately 1%. Staff supports this when you consider the backlog that is out there. The backlog started to build before we completed all of our meters. That's not exactly right, but it's seen, you know, from staff's viewpoint, that seems reasonable. As I mentioned, the current proposal just came through, I think it was today, was that we pay 50% of the first year's cost, whether straight from the table or whether it's based upon that other reduced number that I show here. And the current proposal, the fix now would be revisited within the year, within the year. So when we go into FYE 2027, the, let's call it the Modified Work Group. I called it the Breakout Group for a while, but the Modified Work Group would look at that cost. They would be able to compare what's happening in the last year to what they should do in the next year. The GSAs agree, time is of the essence. Understanding program needs to be in place by the end of the year, which I stated previously. Regardless of scenario, if we build this into the next rate study, it's not a general fund impact. And generally speaking, I believe that the water fund can accommodate this. We have resolutions to talk about this already. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and take direction. Unfortunately, I do have two different scenarios here.
Okay, Mayor Pochettino has another question.
Yeah, Keith, thank you. You brought up a pretty good, interesting point regarding once we provide the resource or the payment for that, the mitigation of that well, and the owner does not move to repair that well, then what happens there? You said, we're not obligated, but there is a state law that's governed by the Department of Water and Resource there that states that every human has a right to access water.
Yes.
So where does that come into play if it's enforced? Meaning, we provide money. I can't do it. I guess I'm a little confused as to, we can't just give money without them having a plan? Or we give them the money and go figure it out?
We give them the money, as I understand it, and they figure it out. This is not by any means close to perfect for many property owners. Many property owners can't afford anything near, say, $10,000 or $20,000. But at the present, let me give you an example of what, the way the well drillers seem to be working right now. Now, this is just, this is just Keith talking. I don't want to imply that I know for a fact, but I do listen when people talk. When a well driller is looking for mitigation through the state, excuse me, when a homeowner is looking for mitigation through the state, the well drillers understand this. They know that the state pays a maximum of $60,000. And that's how the prices come in when somebody looks for a well. Otherwise, when they're coming through, it's some different number based upon what is needed. This is, I won't tell you the source, but it's an understanding of when it's not the state, the average is somewhere around $35,000.
That's my understanding. I've had, just recently, went through that and had one of my clients pay that amount or close to that amount. Again, maybe just to get him water. Not sure how far.
Yes.
He grilled, but it was enough to mitigate the issue that he had.
So when we say 35,000, it may very well cut it. But the things that, you know, when a well owner will be excluded if their casing has broke and is not due to the dry well table. I'd like to think it's as simplistic as you check the water level and it's dry. But there are other things that happen. So that's, but generally speaking, if you provide them 35,000, it doesn't pay them for a new pump if they need a new pump. It doesn't pay them for the new pipe to run from the house to that new well site, so on and so forth. If they need a new electrical box, it won't pay for that. So the 35,000 does what it does. And that's the, the part that I worry about. It's also the part that I, when I say I'm not sure that the backlog of two twenty will be coming at us immediately. I think it'll come back at us as fast as the homeowners can afford to do it.
But meanwhile, there's still a requirement to provide safe drinking water.
Yes, there's, there's a requirement to provide for dry wells. And it doesn't get, it doesn't necessarily get specific about, say, water quality. At least that's not what I recall lately, but we will. I'm trying to remember whether it's still in the table. When you, I provided counsel intentionally the red lines that we have in the plan. And I'm not sure that water quality stays in there. We're sticking to what we're sticking to what the, 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 we think the state needs to have in it. So that makes it a little bit hard. We all know that when the water table drops, water quality can be impacted because the water quality is affected based upon, um, the level at which the water is being uh, taken out of the wells. For municipal wells, we're very careful. We will, we will screen off the areas where the water table, where the water is not very good in quality. I don't know how well that works for private wells. I just don't. And it depends, likely going to depend on the well driller. They have to keep people out there to go ahead and check the, uh, the soil, the, the stratum of the soil as it comes out, test the water at various different levels. It's not a simple or cheap process.
Thank you. That's all I had. I will just end with, um, I, I do believe that we as a city have done our part in trying to draw the least amount or at least balance. And the proportionate amount certainly reflects our efforts and not only you know, recharging, but also not depleting it at a rate that other players have there too. So I, I stick to that same recommendation.
Sure. I think the city is doing well. If you don't mind, I'll ask specific questions and I'll try to go ahead and work it through in terms of the work group and then the breakout group. Um, so when it comes to the fair share percentage, is one percent acceptable?
Yeah.
We need thumbs up or?
Well, the, the one thing I would suggest is get general guidance, then go out to public comment and then do a final motion for everything that everybody got the thumbs up on. So Keith, if you could keep track of what they do and then once it goes out and then do a final motion.
Yes.
So is, um, council good with the one percent thumbs up?
Can I, can I ask just a clarifying question? The one percent, is this you trying to negotiate on behalf of the city? Because, or I mean, it's, is it acceptable with this group?
Well, in some cases it's me, I've beaten this in, that's the wrong word. I've brought it up multiple times and GSAs do agree with we should, we are close to being done. So one percent, not going to get any argument from anybody negotiating. That it's, it's not, it's not really that, but it, it's kind of that.
Okay.
Okay, so one percent. Now, that one, that one percent, that's for the work group. For the breakout, one percent for the first year and then, and, and then what happens in the second year? Do you want to negotiate in the second years? Based upon completed projects?
I, yes, I, that scenario would potentially go to zero.
It can potentially go to zero. Given what, given that, that discussion with the state, it left me all kinds of confused. When they say it's up to us. If, 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 if the second year comes along and there's still dry wells coming along and other GSAs don't agree, we've done our job, they will want to draw us back in. But we'll say, wait a minute, all our projects are done. Then it may come down to the model. The model will be refined from year to year to year. And that, that refinement may say that we weren't quite perfect when we said the city was uh, two percent, then one percent. Well, we should be zero percent when we get there. They may say something else is going on. We've discovered something different with the, with the way water is soaking into the ground when it rains. Don't know, but they, that's, that's one reason why it can change. They may, the whole thing may, may get mixed up in terms of of how much we, you know, whether we really are balanced. It could be that we're never balanced if that model says that it's, it's just that way. Cause it's kind of an interesting thing to go ahead and say you go from farms to you go to urban use. Farms use lots of water. Nuts use excessive amounts of water. Um, vines use not so much depending upon drip, uh, da, 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 da. But when you go to urban, we are balanced. And that's, that's what the model says. It's kind of interesting. And part of that is because we now, we're not, we're not growing anything other than grass and we have restrictions on that. We have water meters that make people think about this. So however it's working out, we're saving water. When you look at the statistics, we're saying, we're, we're, we're using well, around half or less the amount of water that we did ten years ago. So it's, it's, it's incredible what we've done when we started installing the meters and making people aware of this. Uh, but it could be that still comes along. Village D, we show purple pipe in there. We're, we're moving on to the next phase of trying to go ahead and make certain we don't use water. Um, so in the end, hopefully we stay that way. We're, we're partnering with the Madera Irrigation District. We're not just, we're not just doing, uh, the, the recharge at the, at the Berry Basin. We also have recharge at the golf, at the golf course. When there's extra water, they fill in the, the, uh, the, 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 uh, water hazard. I don't know what hole that is. Anyway, all the way to the, all the way to the south. So we are partnering with MID six?
Uh, between five and six.
Okay. So we're doing that. I don't know if it's been full this year or not, uh, but we're, we're, we're doing those things. So we're, we're, we're taking steps and MID is a partner in this. Uh, okay, so one percent and we renegotiate?
Yeah.
See one thumb? I see multiple. I see all thumbs. Okay.
Just to clarify, Keith, you said people outside of urban areas are nuts?
Sorry? It depends on which urban areas. But they have nuts. Treat nuts here. I see nuts going on down the freeway at times. Okay, let me go back to my notes. Going back to the, um, the table that you saw. That would be one percent there. Now, I, the recommendation from staff was we stick to the one percent and not, and not, and not, and not go ahead and do fair share, split it equally on management of, of the, of the DWMP. Management of the DWMP, split it equally pops us up by fifteen thousand dollars a year. And if we've, quite frankly, if we're balanced, why should we be paying? Uh, there will be a question in two or three years whether we should be paying at all. I tend to think we're going to end up paying something because the state's not going to say, well, you're all done. Now the only one that's left is county. The program to my understanding needs to be in place until the year twenty forty, so we can't all just opt out. I don't think we can, but that can be the next year that we discuss. Uh, I don't know, I don't know how the next meetings are going to go, but this gives me a place to go ahead and say council, uh, thinks this. And I, you may be seeing me more frequently, frequently on this subject and, you know, from meeting to meeting as, as this evolves. I think I saw them thumbs up on not splitting equally. For the work group. Uh, the work group is one year. Right now, the, the, the plan with agreement with the GSA says five year. I don't think the city agrees with five year. We would, we want to be able to renegotiate in the work group at one year. I think I've jumped subjects and I know I'm, I'm confusing council to some degree.
Keith, is the advantage of the five year only because we think it's just going to decrease, right? That's, that's kind of the city standpoint.
Sorry.
You're, you're, you're wanting to do the, sorry, the one year is because we, we're going to see potentials.
We, we want, I think we want one year because we are going to see us going to zero. Waiting to year five to recalculate is not fair to the city.
Keith, I mean, it kind of leads into, I guess, the, a really dumb question. If we're at zero, why are we part of the GSA? If everybody else bails out it when they feel there's no cost to them.
Well, if we get done, we won't have to worry about them bailing out, but they're.
I mean, what, what gives them the right to say, we don't need to be a part of this and us potentially going to zero and still being a part of it?
Uh, that's, that's just a statement from the state. Um, when they say that other GSAs can bail out, they didn't, they didn't say that.
Sure.
But, uh, but when they say as long as you, uh, you get a DWMP, that means what the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act says, they're good. But if they start to see people not being mitigated, uh, after making requests, they're going to revisit it and then everything we do might be subject to reconsideration on their part and they, they could conceivably do, what's the word? Well, put us into a non-compliance, uh, category. There's only one. There's only ones, one GSA in the state that's in non-compliance right now.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is you have, was it Newstone wrote that it's the seven percent and they're saying they're, they're going to do their own thing, but we're at one percent and we're still saying we're sticking with it. That's why I guess I'm confused as to why we're such a lower percentage.
So the, so there has to be some belief on their part that they don't have anybody to mitigate within their GSA.
Okay.
Or, or it's minimal and it's, it's definitely worth them doing that. Cause seven percent of seven percent is worth five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars a year. Uh, if they don't have a lot of water wells in their GSA, uh, just the five hundred and forty-eight thousand, that can take care of like, you know, ten, fifteen dry wells a year. I, I don't know what they have.
Yeah.
Uh, I am in the wrong spot. Is council okay with? That's the one percent. You've already answered that. Would you prefer to do a half payment into a fund or pay the eighty thousand dollars now? I did, it, it's. I assume it was brought up because well, example, county is five million dollars to get, put the five million dollars into the bank account immediately is a lot of money. And they, they might not have it just at, at this moment. Um, eighty thousand dollars, we can probably, uh, we can probably do that. Uh, but do we have a preference? Uh, if, if, do we go, go with the, uh, go with what the other GSAs want and say we're flexible? Or say we must have forty? Again, this was just brought up today.
Well, I mean, that eighty thousand may be earning interest on the city's behalf. So maybe, I'm not sure if it's in a late account. But if we do forty and be flexible.
We're flexible?
I mean.
Flexible.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm, there's no point of us putting eighty thousand dollars, not knowing what the other GSAs are going to do, right? So.
Yeah. I, yeah, I, 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 I don't see the seven point eight million dollars being called on the first year. I don't see us being able to go ahead and get four dry, get mitigation for four dry wells a week. I just don't see it. Um, it's, we can't, there's no way we can manage it unless we hire consultants, say, but, you know, put five people on it. Or we get that agreement a whole lot, the, the agreement I was talking about or the plan, get that to be a whole lot simpler.
Okay, so thumbs up, flexible?
Flexible, okay.
Flexible doesn't mean seventy-nine thousand.
Okay. That may get it. Um, I may be back in two weeks because the emails. I, I have another meeting on Monday, which I won't go into.
Okay, with that, I open it up to public comment. Anybody in the chamber? Anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none, mayor.
Thank you. All closed. Public comment and, um, Director of Engineering, I think you have your direction on where to go with this. Any other questions? Oh.
Mayor, would you actually mind just a formal vote at this point for everything that the council gave a thumbs up on? Just say motion to approve in a second. I think we're good.
We can do that. Um, bring it back to my colleagues for a motion in a second.
Motion to approve what we've, um, second emotion.
I have a motion in a second on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
For your report. Moving on to the next item.
Item E two, appointments to the golf course advisory committee.
And that will be presented by our Parks Director, Abir. Come on up.
I did it again. It's this one, huh? This one? Yeah. Oh, okay. Get it right one day. Okay, you all thought you were ready, done with me, but I'm not done yet. Um, so this is item E two. Um, and I'll be presenting this Parks Director, Joe Abir. And this is for appointments to the Golf Course Advisory Committee. If you recall, we discussed this a couple of weeks ago and we tabled this to this meeting. So just to kind of give you a little bit of a recap. Uh, the committee was established, uh, by City Council in September sixth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, was established to serve in an advisory capacity to the city on matters dealing with, uh, the Madera Municipal Golf Course. Uh, the Golf Course Advisory Committee is comprised of seven members. The members, uh, represent distinct roles and have various terms of appointment. Uh, several committee members are reaching their term limit. Uh, staff is seeking direction on nominations and appointments to the committee so as to allow for seamless transition to new members and avoid vacancies. Uh, the committee is, consists of the following, one city council member, parks director, a representative from the, uh, tenant. Um, then there's a service organization representative, a golf, golfer at large, community member, a food and beverage director representative, and then a non-golfer at large community member. Uh, this is kind of what I, illustrates what I just said. As you can see, there's three individuals who have two-year terms and that, those are the topics of discussion for this presentation. Uh, there are three positions nearing their term. Um, the service organization representative, the non-golfer at large community member, the golfer at large and the golfer at large, uh, community member. Uh, on July twenty-first, uh, we, we sought direction on the appointments for these positions. So as to ensure that we, um, these positions aren't left vacant for an extended period of time. Uh, during the meeting, you guys provided me prevent, direction, uh, to confirm if, uh, current, current appointments to the golfer, non-golfer position would be interested in a continued appointment for another two years. Uh, there was, uh, there was an interest, uh, we were advised by a community member, Andy Madellan for the non-golfer at large, uh, community position and then also this interest, uh, from And then also this interest, uh, from a community member, Dan Riley, from the service organization representative position. Uh, we reached out to current committee members at the golfer at large committee member and the non-golfer at large community roles determine their interests in serving another term. We sent individual email notifications to both Mr. Romero and Mr. McIntyre requesting confirmation of their interest in continuing for another term. Only Mr. Romero responded with interest in a second term. So based on the feedback from council and responses, non-responses from members whose terms are up, the following is kind of a summary of potential recommendations at this time. Uh, we have Mr. Madellan for the non-golfer at large community member, uh, Mr. Riley for the service organization. And, uh, Cheeto Romero for the golfer at large community member. And that's all the information I have for, for now. Uh, there's no financial impact associated with this presentation, uh, because none of the members are compensated. Um, our recommendation is that we consider recommendations for appointments to the golf course committee for the service organization representative, golf course at large member and the non-golfer at large community. And we adopt a resolution naming and approving the appointments to the golf course advisory committee for the service organization representative, the golfer at large and the non-golfer at large community member. So that's the end of my presentation and I'm open for any instruction you want to give me on this.
Thank you for that. Mayor Procha Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Gallo, Gallegos, and thanks again, uh, Director Abir. Um, uh, as I had requested to table this, only to give an opportunity to those that had served. Thank you again for reaching out to them. I did have an opportunity to reach out to them myself. Um, and in speaking with, uh, uh, Member McIntyre, he did um, suggested, well, not suggest, he did agree to serve that second term if this council would, would nominate him as well. Um, I, I think I had the same expressed desire from Mr. Romero. I think you guys have reached out to him. And then, uh, our mayor had, uh, uh, suggested, uh, uh, Mr. Madellan and on the service request. I'm okay with the um, the service request, uh, on the, uh, Mr. Madellan. But I would like to nominate Mr. McIntyre to continue, uh, on this advisory board if this board would, would have him. Um, I think he brings in a lot of, uh, really good information, institutional knowledge in regards to a lot of the assets that we own at the, at the golf course and also he's a golfer at large. So I would ask that we seek that nomination for Mr. McIntyre. And move forward with the other two that were there, I believe, Mr. Madellan and, uh, Mr. Dan Riley.
Okay, with that, I bring it back to my colleagues for any other comments and concerns? I see none. I open it up for public comment. Anyone in the chamber? Anyone online or on Zoom? City Clerk Gonzalez?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay, then I bring it, I close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for a motion for an appointment or recommendation.
I have made that nomination, uh, to continue with, uh, Mr. McIntyre.
Okay, I have a motion.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. We have our committee members for our golf course.
Okay, it's just, just for clarification, so it's the same. It's, is, or.
Well, let me.
No.
Uh, so we just have.
Let me.
Yeah, you lost me.
So, I think, uh, you, we went with the nomination. So you asked for a nomination. I said the nomination would be for Mr. McIntyre to remain. But the original motion was to keep the service request, Mr. Dan Riley. The, uh, non-golfer, Mr. Madellan, and the golfer at large, Mr. McIntyre.
Oh, so we, but I thought we had an interest from Mr. Romero to continue as well.
I made the nomination for Mr. McIntyre.
Okay, that's.
Okay, is that clear?
I think it is clear, but could we go ahead and have one more vote on that, just so it's clear for the record?
Okay, Mayor Procha Rodriguez, you want to go ahead and make it clear and then we'll make a second and then go from there.
So the, the motion that I made was that for the service, um, request would be Mr. Dan Riley. For the non-golfer, Mr. Madellan, and for the golfer at large, Mr. McIntyre.
A second then.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. We do have a comment from Council Member Mejia. Hey. With that, you have direction and a motion and we'll go from there.
Cool.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item.
Item E three, city's street lighting update.
And that will be presented by our, um, Manager of Facilities, uh, Mr. Scroggins. Thank you for being here tonight.
Mayor, if I may, right before Cole begins, um, or, um, for council members, Cole has been a longtime city employee. The last time I tried to guess how long a city employee has been here, I was only off by twenty years. Uh, but Cole's our, Cole manages our electrical in our, uh, in our city facilities. Cole, uh, has a tremendous amount of knowledge. Uh, he has a great team. To borrow one of Joe's terms, uh, they're small and mighty. But one of the things that I've learned is that whenever we have an issue at the city, electrical, mechanical, uh, it could be a water well, it, it can be something at the wastewater treatment plant. I can assure you that Cole is usually on top of it and he's one of the first people we call and he, he usually has a solution. They're not always cheap solutions, but he always has a solution. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Cole. Thank you, Mayor.
Just shy of twenty.
All right, almost twenty there.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, like I said, my name's Cole Scroggins. I've been in the city for just under twenty years. Um, electrical facilities is what I do. Um, I'm a man of little words, so hopefully that'll be enough tonight. Um, the purpose of the report is to give instant, uh, informational knowledge on the city's street lighting, whether it be um, just normal streetlights, whether it's the post tops downtown, or whether it's going to be your new solar infrastructure that we have. Um, there's no formal request or need from council, just information only. Um, in our inventory currently, um, between the regular streetlights, post tops and the solar, we have just over forty-four hundreds, forty-four hundred and thirty-six streetlights. Um, of that, PG&E owned is eight hundred ninety-two. Um, that is what's considered a flat rate LS one. So we pay a flat rate fee, no matter if it's working or not. Um, so that's why it's imperative that either we tell them to repair it, the public speaks up about it, or I'll get it later in the nighttime surveys we do. Um, but it's a flat rate and that consists of the maintenance for that light fixture and the electricity. Um, next we have the city-owned streetlights. Of that, we have thirty-five hundred, uh, just a little over. Um, in that, there is two different rates that we pay, which is an LS two. Um, that's a flat rate, so that's just PG&E only, and then we maintain it, of course. Um, then there's also the LS three rates. Those are on meters. So that's going to be what me and Keith have come up over the years is mainly our arterial streets and our major streets is all metered. Um, it gets a little convoluted on the cost, but, um, there's a safety aspect to that and a cost. Um, you, you get metering, you save a little bit of money in the long run. But when a fuse goes out or there's a stolen wire, the whole block goes black. So you get a I don't like that in residential areas, put it that way. So I'd rather just one individual light go out than the whole subdivision. The LED commerce, um, efforts that we've done for conversions, we started with a PG&E grant program in twenty twelve. Um, that consists of a reboot program that we paid the normal rate and that PG&E went out. I think it was just shy of a thousand streetlights they replaced. And then we paid the difference for over ten years. And so that was fully unpaid, um, a couple of years back. Um, so now we're actually accruing some savings on that. Um, and that's probably the biggest user of, as we'll get farther, the dimming of the LED streetlights. Um, then in twenty fourteen, the city staff started, um, my electrical crew began doing that. Um, I was actually one of them on staff. Um, we did a major start of, uh, about five hundred a year. Doing, starting that. It was a big undertaking for the city of Madera of our size. Um, to date, I think we're still the highest rate per older high-pressure sodiums to LEDs and in the end of the town around us, surrounding. Um, the benefits are lower maintenance and better illumination when they're working. Um, maintenance operations, we do nighttime surveys twice a year. I started that about five years ago when I started. Um, so every, I try to do it time change. The guys go out, do nighttime surveys, it's two guys for safety. And basically drive the town and see what's working, what's not. Um, otherwise, we don't know. Um, approximately we repair about twelve a week. That could be due to fixture failure, wire theft, um, infrastructure, um, ants, so forth. Um, not always is it a fixture, could be photocells or anything of that nature. Uh, along with the nighttime surveys, citizens can also use the online forum to report, um, as well as this calling public works. Um, financial impact, um, going back to the PG&E costs, it's eighty-six thousand a year is what the city pays currently for the PG&E owned lights. Um, city-owned costs for power is three hundred and forty thousand a year for PG&E alone. Uh, maintenance costs, we've allocated forty thousand a year for repairs. That does not include the labor or the equipment, such as the bucket truck or any of the nuances that go with that. Um, fixture replacement per fixture is around three hundred fifty to five hundred dollars. Um, it's not the good old days of the older lights that you could just change a bulb. Um, there's an internal driver that controls them and if that's the failure point, which is likely caused, you have to throw it away. So it's replace everything or not. Um, and then you have some photocells with control at daytime, denied. Um, those are magnificent. Um, the challenge that we're seeing that have just started over more pronounced, I would say, over the last year is the dimming of LED lights. Um, I think it's causing a little frustration among myself and the community. Um, while the LEDs are rated for about a thousand hours or a million as they close, so claim, um, the driver that controls it, seven to nine years, depending on the manufacturer or the maker. Um, to replace the drivers are unavailable. There is no repair parts whatsoever. Um, so like I said, it's a full replacement. Um, there's a limited maintenance fund for that, um, as of now. Um, staffing times is roughly per light fixture is about twenty to thirty minutes, um, not just, like I said, replacing a bulb. Um, future considerations, um, maybe exploring some options of some more funding to proactively get ahead of the dimming. Um, I was able to allocate some funds internally for the same streetlight fund on some projects that we did not do over the year because of staffing levels, not because of um, there was different nuances between Pat retiring, there's, you know, city electrician retiring, uh, someone move on to another city and, um, the third person, I lost, we lost three. So that was, so I was able to use some of my funding, so we, I did get an extra couple hundred lights done last year. Um, so I tried to focus on your major streets and intersections first. Just for safety of like we had earlier this evening, the traffic for intersections. Um, so just basically looking for council's direction and, um, information only. Uh, if there's any questions, let me know.
Thank you for that report. I bring it back to my colleagues for any questions or concerns? Ooh, Councilwoman Mejia, get ready.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm also a person of very few words, though you wouldn't think because I'm an elected official. But I really appreciate the report and it's fine, it's nice to finally meet you. I'm one of the ones that submitted a report for a streetlight and you were so quick, probably the quickest city employee. So thank you for that. And also thank you for lighting up Knox Street. Um, all of the lights are up and running, so we really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome.
Um, I just have a comment. I just like to also just send them at my colleagues' comments about, thank you. I know it's, um, we are out there, we hear comments left and right about streetlights and is it PG&E, is it us? And I've heard a lot of people like Councilman Mejia call in and it's taken care of right away. And for safety reasons, we as neighborhood watch go out and tell a lot of our community, you need lighting. Lighting is deterring crime, deterring anything happening to you. And so on our part as the city, I appreciate us making sure that we're lighting up our streets, our neighborhood to make our, this community safe. So, um, go out and tell your staff that they've done a great job. We appreciate them at night, teaming up and going around the city. Um, tell them to look for crazy mayor because she's out there with them at night, looking to see what lights are out also. So I'm, I'm doing the job with them also. Um, with that, I'll open up public comment. I see none in the chamber, online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
I close public comment at this time and facility managers, I think you have, um, um, information that you've given us that is very clear. I just have one more thing before we close. Um, I think that as elected officials and knowing that this is something important, that maybe we could look at um, the budget and seeing where we need to maybe grab some dollars to put into, um, a replacement fund like we've done for fire engine and our vehicles in law enforcement or playground equipment. And maybe this is something we need to kind of look in as staff of putting in some money in a bucket every year for this reason where we're not, um, kind of scrapping to make sure that we're not getting ourselves covered. If, um, I can get a thumbs up from my colleagues, I have, um, everyone here saying yes. Okay. With that, um, thank you very much for being here and hanging out with us for a while this evening.
Thank you.
And moving on to the next item.
Item E four is the response to Madera County Grand Jury Final Report, twenty-four, twenty-five dash eleven, published on Monday, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, titled, titled City Bogey's Grand Jury's Report.
And that will be given by our City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, council can give me a second. As the city clerk indicated, this item is the city's response to the grand jury. Uh, for background purposes, this is the third consecutive year that the grand jury has focused on the golf course. Um, as council's aware, the city constructed the golf course. If memory serves me, uh, early nineteen nineties, around nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one, the city operated the golf course until it went out, uh, prepared a request for proposals back in two thousand and nine. During that, uh, time in two thousand and nine, the city council at the time selected a Sierra Golf Management for the management of the golf course. At that point, the city turned it over the daily operations to a private, um, contractor. Um, and this report, um, actually discusses the two thousand and nine contract on a couple of occasions. Um, I apologize in advance if some of this is going to appear redundant for some veteran council members because again, it's three consecutive years of, of um, discussion of the golf course. Um, all of this information is provided in the council packet that you received on Friday. Um, so, um, I, I'm, I'm not going to skim it, I would say, but I, I'm not too sure if I'm going to read word for word because, uh, um, it's all in the council packet. Um, for background purposes, the council does have ninety days to submit a response. Uh, the city received this report on June the thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, so we are well within the ninety-day timeframe. Written responses must be prepared pursuant to, uh, uh, Government Code Section nine three three point oh five, which defines, so it's very specific with how the city can respond. The report that council has before you this evening is a draft. Council has the, uh, the authority or the discretion to modify any response as you see appropriate. Council would go back, modify those responses, um, as council provides direction, if any, um. Um, and at that point, city staff will amend them and we will submit them to the grand jury, uh, at the council's behalf. Um, so again, I, I just mentioned this, it's very specific with how the city can, can respond. There is, um, there's a response to findings. Um, as a city council, you can, you, you either have to either agree with the finding or you can um, disagree wholly or partially with the finding. And that's how every one of them has to begin. So if they sound, if the syntax may sound a bit odd, that's because that's how we are legally obligated to respond. To the recommendations, um, so there's two series. There's the finding is the top part of the report. I think there's twelve findings. And then there's twelve recommendations. To those recommendations, we also have to respond with that, if the recommendation's going to be implemented. Um, and then we have to summarize what we're going to do. Or if we are not going to implement it, but it will be implemented in the future. And then we also have to provide a timeframe. Um, and then, um, on the recommendations, there are, there are a couple of other actions, um, that council may take. One of them is, uh, we can require further analysis or we can also indicate that this recommendation will not be implemented. Um, and then we can provide an explanation. So finding one, uh, the ground jury found that a city administrator instructed Smokehouse to contact a financial officer regarding how to change the business license to reflect the group's name. The group is specific to Sugar Pint Smokehouse. The city administrator is myself, Arnold Rodriguez. So as a draft response, um, we indicated that, um. That I did not instruct, and I'm saying I because it's very specific to me, so, um. So if it sounds a bit pers- um, personal, it's because it is. Uh, so the city manager did not instruct Sugar Pint Smokehouse on changing a business license, rather. I happened to be at lunch there one day and the owner approached me. And she inquired about the grand jury report for the previous two years, and one of the things I, 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 I indicated, I said, well, one thing you may consider doing is. Making sure that everything, that all of your business license and your permit at the A B C, which is Alcohol Beverage Control. May, maybe this should be under the same name. And, um, um, and this actually goes back to previous grand jury reports. And, um, what the grand jury noted is that I instructed her, um, and this is a printout of the email that was provided to the grand jury. Which I'm including here. And I, and, and in the email, it says, I guess I made a few mistakes when setting up the business license and Arnoldo suggested I reach out to you. That was the entire conversation, I simply said, I, I think you may want to call our staff. And that's why I left it, I, I didn't go into more detail because I didn't have more detail to provide. That's a common standard of practice, if people see, they see me in the community and they say, what do I do? I will usually say, call X. Um, if it's about engineering, I'll say, call Keith, if it's about parks, I'll say, call Joe. That's, that's just something that I do, being a community member, um. That was the extent of my conversation with her. Uh, finding two was that the grand jury found that the business license was initiated by a civic, by a city administrator. In this case, it's not me, it's just a city administrator. Email record from the city confirmed that this was done without any application filed by the group, the group being Su- Sugar Pint Smokehouse. The city disagrees with this finding. Um, Sugar Pint submitted an application on December the fifth of twenty twenty-three, the application was approved and a license was issued. I- in twenty twenty-four. Um, at the time of the business license renewal in twenty twenty-four, the city manager, me, uh, advised Sugar. Pi- um, Sugar Pine, that the business license should reflect the same legal entity name shown as the state of California alcohol. License, again, A B C. Um, the discrepancy between names was noted by the grand jury in a previous year. And, and so we were simply saying, hey, you may want to consider this, we did not mandate it, we didn't require it, it was a suggestion. Because it was identified in previous years as a potential area of concern. Finding three, the grand jury finds a lack of documentation, there's a lack of proper documentation and transparency in the process of issuing and modifying a business license. The city disagrees with this finding. Um, um, how, how the city issues or to what, it's codified in the, in the city's municipal code. Uh, with that being said, uh, we also agree that, that, that regular review and, and, and updates of policies and procedures is a good practice. And we, we currently do that now. Um, I finding for the grand jury finds on compliance with ordinances and they list, um, the municipal code section there. The challenge with this section is we're disagreeing specifically, um. There are sixty-two sections in that section of the code. And while the city would like to provide a better response, the challenge is we're not too sure which of the sixty-two sections they're referring to, it's a very voluminous section. It's provided in your council report. Memory serves me right, I'm gonna say it was a hundred and one pages, and so while we would like to be more forthcoming, or I would say forthcoming. Uh, we would like to provide a more thorough response, we're not too sure what section they're referring to. Because, um, their finding is silent, or it does not mention specifically which section. Finding five, the grand jury finds potential conflict of interest. A city manager's involvement in a business license issuing process raises concerns about conflicts of interest. It, of interest, especially in light of the team response, the team response in the grand jury was specifically myself. Our legal counsel and city staff. Hit, in the past, which we did the same thing this year. Um, city staff prepared responses and we consulted with our legal counsel to make sure that we were. Um, that city staff's response was professional and it was proper, um. So finding number five, the response is that the city would disagree with this finding. Uh, specifically, this finding lacks any factual or legal foundation, the city manager often provides guidance to businesses within the city on how to come into compliance. I see people in the community, I'll, I'll talk to them. Um. This is no different than any other person approaching me on any other issue in the community. Um, in this case, Sugar Pine did obtain a business license and they paid their business license tax, which is previously noted. However, it had placed, it being Sugar Pine, had placed the wrong legal name on its business license, which they needed to be corrected. That was my involvement, and I, I wasn't even involved with that aspect. My involvement was, I saw her while I was at lunch one day and I talked to her for a few minutes. Um, moreover, the city did not waive any fees, we didn't relax any taxes. Um, I simply said, you should call this person. Um, not only that, um, um, I'm also, um. I'm also subject to the various state laws when it comes to conflict of interest, I report those on my Form seven hundred. I can also take A B's, come with the three, four ethics classes, which is all public information. Um, on top of that, the grand jury report fails to provide any evidence or analysis remotely bearing any potential financial conflicts of interest. Furthermore, the grand jury does not represent any facts that even remotely raises the potential for a conflict of interest under any legal theory. This one's kind of, um. It's a lengthy response, but again, it's about me specifically and, and I, I'm, um. So, uh, finding six, the grand jury finds public scrutiny. The actions taken by city officials in issuing and modifying business licenses should be documented and made available for public scrutiny. This, we agree with that finding, they are, and they're subject to a Public Records Act request, so. Um, if anyone wants to file a Public Records Act request, which people do, we will provide such information pursuant to the government code. Uh, the grand jury finds, this is finding seven, the grand jury finds impact on public trust, uh, trust, the irregularities in the business license issuance process. Harm public trust in city officials and the administration. Um, going back, we, we disagree with this finding and it's. Everything we do is subject to Public Records Act request, if someone requests information, we provide it. So in terms of public documentation or public scrutiny, we are, we, we more than welcome it. And we will provide documentation, just like we would for any other item. Finding eight, the grand jury does not read the, I'm sorry, the council, so the grand jury finds that the council does not read the findings, recommendations. And city responses to the grand jury reports. Um, the draft response is the city disagrees with this finding, the conclusion is subjective and lacks supporting evidence, city council agendas. And supporting documents, including findings, recommendations and city responses to grand jury reports are published at least seventy-two hours in advance of public meetings and full compliance with the Brown Act. The materials are also available on the city's website. And the agendas are posted at two, um, conspicuous locations here at City Hall. Uh, moreover, uh, the city prepares minutes for each council meeting, which summarizes the council action. Those minutes are brought before the council, which are also approved and that reflects the city's official record. Um, the agendas are posted on the website, the videos are posted on the website, and those are available to the community. Finding, uh, number nine, the grand jury finds the, the equipment inventory exhibit B, and that's an exhibit that's commonly referred to as outdated. For background, exhibit B was a list of items from the original contract in two thousand and nine. So this exhibit goes back roughly sixteen years. That was the inventory list that was agreed to back in two thousand and nine, that came before the city council back then. Um. This exhibit has been referred to on multiple occasions by grand juries. The issue. The city staff. We can update that, however. It's, it's a snapshot at that date, we're not trying to rewrite history, that's, that was inventory list, we're not trying to change the inventory list from two thousand and nine. We're simply trying to capture that that's the inventory list and there was an agreement, that's no different than any other agreement that the city would, um, would have. Um, after the contract was executed back in two thousand and nine, both parties participated in a salvage exercise, which the city retrieved usable property. Um, while S G M disposed of some of the other items back in two thousand and nine from speaking with staff that were involved. They, they had indicated that a lot of the, the equipment that was out there was, was, was old and beat up and, and it wasn't really usable. Um, some of the equipment I'm told was thrown away, some equipment was brought back to the city. The items on exhibit B. Um, back in the two thousand and nine agreement. Were either maintained there or they were brought back to the city, the city conducted more recently in, in July of this year. We conducted an analysis of the equipment, we sent staff out to the golf course. There's approximately twenty items that the city still owns that are at the golf course to this day, that are still being used. Finding ten, the grand jury finds the cleaning of solar panels has been paid by S G M from the capital improvement fu- uh, fund and not the maintenance cost. The capital improvement fund is something that this council has discussed at length, um. The city disagrees with this finding, capital improvement funds were utilized to enhance the restroom, uh, and to install new doors and flooring at the golf course clubhouse. Um, which were capital improvements and not maintenance. The installation of, uh, of doors and flooring was carried about by J Solar Panels, a private contractor that handles building repairs in addition to solar installation. The other, uh, the, the other item, I'll add to that, is that there are no solar panels at the golf course. So, th- there's not a solar system at the golf course. Uh, the grand ju- finding eleven, the grand jury finds that the advisor committee monthly meeting reports are not made available to the city council. Um, the draft response is the city disagrees with this finding. Reports are accessible to all community members, including city council members, the city council's offer is also provided a copy of the advisory committee agendas and minutes. Additionally, the, the committee meetings are conducted via Zoom and are open to the public, um. And then also, it should be noted that a member of this council sits on the advisory committee. And that, um, and that updates are provided, um, to the council. Find, finding twelve, the grand jury finds insufficient training regarding business license applications and issuance requirements. The city partially disagrees with this finding. While there is training that is provided to staff on business license application and issuing to permits, the training could be improved. Um, and some of that could be that whenever we have staff change over, there's a good number of people involved in business licensing, it's not simply the, the finance department. It's city planning, the billing code enforcement, the police department, the, the fire department, so, uh, there are different people involved. And so we, we agree that, that continues, um, uh, uh, training is, is needed. Um, in, in business licensing, just like any other process that the city has. So now we're gonna pivot to the recommendations for the first twelve where findings, which we responded to. Uh, the, the following twelve are recommendations from the grand jury to the city. Recommendation number one, the grand jury recommends transparency and accountability. The city should ensure, ensure transparency and accountability in the issuance and modification of business licenses. All actions taken by city officials should be documented and made available for public scrutiny within sixty days of this report being published. The, we recommend that this recommendation not be implemented and is not warranted and reasonable. Um, again, the city will continue to comply with the standard set by state law in response to Public Record Act request associated with business license activities. Um, so, um, anyone that comes in and requests a Public Records Act rec- um, request through the city clerk's office, we'll go through it. And we'll go through the proper channels and anything that, that, that can be made available publicly, we will. There, there, there are times where some information is redacted, um, and that's what we use our legal counsel for, to, to ensure that we're complying with the Public Records Act. Um, law. Recommendation two, the grand jury recommends the city administration hire an independent agency to hire a. To conduct a thorough review and audit of the business license issuance process to identify any. A- any irregularities and ensure compliance with city ordinances within ninety days of receiving this report. Um, the response is this recommendation will not be implemented, the city does not have the resources for such a review. However, the city continues to refine and improve its business license processes and will continue to make several enhancements to those processes. Over the eighteen months, and again, this is in the spirit of continuous improvement, we, we meet often to talk about these things. Um, 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 both, both with multiple departments or sometimes just in- internal departments to talk about. What, how can we make the customer or enhance the customer experience and to make things better. Recommendation three, the grand jury recommends improving communication between city departments and the city council to ensure that all relevant information is shared. Discussed and documented within thirty days. Recommendation three, this recommendation will not be implemented because it, because it is not warranted or it is not reasonable. While the city desires to provide additional information, this recommendation is unclear as to what is being referenced. So sharing everything with everyone, we're, we're not too sure exactly what they're referring to. Um, that's, so again, this is similar to one of the findings, we would, we, we wanna be. Uh, helpful, we're just not too sure what this is in reference to. Recommendation four, um, the city, the count, the grand jury recommends enforcement of ordinances. Um. The city's response is the city will not implement this recommendation to the extent it would be, it would require the city to engage in additional enforcement activities that. Um, than it already does, so one of the challenges, um, is, is, is bandwidth in the city. Um, while the city attempts to, to enforce every law, it comes down to bandwidth. So oftentimes, for example, in code enforcement, it'll be complaint driven in animal control. Um, where our, 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 our animal control officers are responding to calls and don't necessarily have a lot of time. Or the resources to go after proactively, while we try to do that, it is challenging and it would be, and it would be the same thing with business licensing. Recommendation five, the grand jury recommends implementing a conflict of interest policy to ensure that city officials do not have any personal or financial interest in the business they regulate. Response to recommendation five, the city will not implement this recommendation as it already, uh. As it is already in full compliance with the requirements of the state law, so again, the Political Reform Act, which is, uh, whi- which is a state law. Um, is something we're already subject to, a city officials, and we, we're, we're in compliance with that law. Um, we also have to complete our financial interest forms, Form seven hundreds, those are available and, um. I've looked myself up, so they go back and, um, it's a number of years, those are filed with the state, they're publicly available, and we also require A B two. Uh, three, four, training, which is ethics training. Um, city staff, um, has to do that as well as, um, boards commission, city council members. Recommendation six, the grand jury recommend a launching, um, recommends that the city launch a public. Awareness campaign to inform residents and business owners about the importance of compliance with city ordinances and the procedures for obtaining business licenses within thirty days. Um, we are recommending that, that this not be implemented. Um, the city finds that there's no assurance that such a campaign will produce any measurable improvement in compliance with business license regulations. And the city's limited public resources are needed out where. Um, one of the things is not all of our community residents are opening businesses and we may be, uh, providing, um. Information or, 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 or training to people that will never have a need for it. Whenever someone's gonna open a business license, if they have info questions, they can always contact staff and we will be happy to assist them. Recommendation seven, the grand jury finds that the entire grand jury report, report be read to the city council members in an open public meeting. Um. Recommending that this, uh, not be implemented, the city is already compliant with the Brown Act and similar legal requirements as previously discussed. Which is that, which establishes applicable standards. Uh, moreover, these documents are all available. Um, to the public pursuant to state law. Recommendation eight, the grand jury recommends hiring an outside expert to check the city's property and equipment records and also doing regular checks with the city. Um, this recommendation has already been implemented, the city already maintains a list of relevant property. In addition, the city conducted a review in, in July of twenty twenty-five, so. Um, we, we have a list of the property we own, um, we, we, we update it regularly for insurance purposes, so we already have a list. Recommendation nine, the grand jury recommends conducting regular audits of Sierra Golf Management's business expenses in regards to capital improvements versus maintenance obligations. This recommendation has already been implemented, um, the city conducts quarterly reviews. Of S G M's business expenses, which include expenses related to capital and revenue generated from rounds played. Uh, moving forward, this information will be included in the Parks and Rec reports presented to council quarterly, so right now. We have quarterly reports, we'll start including that information as part of those reports. Recommendation ten, the grand jury recommends improving the document process. The documentation process for issuing and modifying business licenses to ensure that all actions are properly recorded and transparent. Uh, this recommendation will be implemented, the city continues to refine its business license process. Um, documentation as new tool, software, online resources become available, and, and we'll be doing that over the period of the next eighteen months. The grant, recommendation eleven, the grand jury recommends engaging with stakeholders, including business owners and residents to gather feedback and improve the business license issuance process. Um, this recommendation will not be implemented and it is not reasonable, most business owners and residents are not familiar with all aspects of the business license process. Um, this recommendation will not be implemented as it is not reasonable, most business owners and residents are not familiar with all aspects of the business license process. Which would significantly impact the quality of responses that would be received during such outreach. Uh, staff will continue to evaluate existing processes and make adjustments to them as necessary. And recommendation twelve, the grand jury recommends that the advisory committee reports be agendized monthly and read to the council in an open meeting. This is similar to a previous response, this recommendation will not be implemented, uh, the city already complies with the Brown Act. Moreover, the courts can't compel cities to conduct their meetings in any particular way, so as long as they comply with the Brown Act, so, um. The city are complied, we have open meetings that are available, they're on Zoom, they're on YouTube. They're recorded, they're posted on our website, the minutes are available online, and we have agendas, so we do not think that this, um, is needed. Um, in addition, we have more committees and simply the golf course advisory committee. Um, so, um, we think it would be impractical to require the reading of written reports to council meetings. Again, we have a lot of committees at the meeting, um, that, at the city. And it wouldn't seem appropriate to only read the golf course committee agendas and reports versus all the others. So the financial impact, it's, it's difficult to quantify. Um, due to the secrecy process of the grand jury, so the grand jury does reach out to, uh, staff members throughout the year. Um, it's difficult for staff to know how much time that is because we cannot talk to each other about the process. So if the grand jury contacts me, I'm, I'm not allowed to go to other people and talk to them about it, because it's done in secret, so. Unfortunately, we, we cannot quantify how much time we've spent either meeting with them or producing documents. Um, and so, um, additionally, the response is typically requiring from a good number of staff, including our legal counsel, so. It's very difficult to quantify exactly how much we spend, um, and either providing information or meeting with the grand jury. So the council has a couple of items, um, the council may approve the responses to the grand jury as presented, which were provided to council on Friday. The council can always amend, uh, the draft responses, um, or the council can simply say. Come back on September the twenty eighth when a response is required, so, uh, as long as we come back before September the twenty eighth, that's when the responses are due. Um, we can do that as well. So with that, um, staff's recommendation is that the council review the proposed responses. And approve the responses as presented or provide direction of changes to the proposed response. And that concludes my presentation, thank you, council.
Thank you for that, before I take questions, let the record reflect that councilwoman McHean left at eight thirty-five this evening. Mayor Protim Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Gallegos, uh, City Manager Rodriguez, thank you again for putting us at par, pun intended. Uh, but I, I too, um, I, I, I would follow that recommendation, I think, uh, there is a lot of work that's done. Uh, I, I'd like to say that, uh, since the original report that came out, I think we've done. A pretty good job of trying to maintain compliant with all, uh, uh, aspects of the, uh, uh, original agreement. As always, I mentioned that, that, that agreement may be, um, we're, we're on the, uh, uh, Ninth Amendment. But that's something that obviously this council can decide to clean up. Um, but other than that, I, I thank you for, for responding to that and also our legal team for, for making sure that we provided the timely response.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Rodriguez, and again, another shout out to our, our staff and our attorney for coming up with those responses. Was probably very difficult, especially when we don't have solar panels, but, okay. With that, I open up for public comment in the house, anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none, mayor.
Okay, thank you, and that, um, we'll go for a motion and a second.
I'll move to approve item E four, second then.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes unanimously, moving on to the next item, city clerk Gonzalez.
Is councilmember reports, announcements and future agenda items, this portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and councilmembers to make brief reports. On boards, committees and other public agencies and at public events to request updates, to initiate future agenda items. And to take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet other requirements for action.
Thank you, I will start to my left with councilmember Vegas, anything to report?
Oh, nothing to report.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, uh, Gallegos, on July twenty first, uh, the advisory, uh, golf course advisory did meet. And I'll make it quick and simple, uh, there's four of us at present, but, uh, part of that, uh, meeting was to, uh. Let the advisory know that, uh, one of the units at the, uh, pro shop, the AC units was replaced, I think they're waiting for a part, but I think that is completed. Also, there was a request, uh, from myself and, uh, uh, member McIntyre. To, um, bring that, uh, agreement back to council at some point for review so that we can consider. A, a new agreement at some point, obviously, we're in the middle of that agreement, but, uh, certainly clean it up. And no more amendments and make sure that we start off with the clean slate, uh, that was one of the recommendations, and finally. Um, the other recommendation was, uh, possibly going out for a RFP on a consultant for. Um, the centralized irrigation system that we have, obviously, that's something that, that's always in the back of our minds with irrigation at the course. Uh, we need to have some type of, um. Um, assessment of how much, what needs to be done so that we can bring, uh, part of that irrigation system back, uh, to par. Um, and there's no pun intended there, but, uh, anyways, uh, that's all I have on the advisory. I also wanted to, um, let our council know that I had an opportunity to attend the food bank alongside the mayor. Um, and I had an opportunity to sit with the councilmember Montes, thank you again for having me there. Um, it was great to see how food bank again continuously brings, uh, more and more of our community members together. Uh, to, for a special cause, again, raising money for, for food, um, uh, our food bank. Last but not least, also had an opportunity to sit alongside councilwoman, uh, Evans and councilmember Zachariah at the Lifetime Achievement Awards. Where, uh, several folks from our community were, um, um, recognized, uh, 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 I'll just quickly say their names. Elaine Bethel Fink, she is the tribal, uh, council, uh, member from the North Fork. Uh, Jerry Desmond is a very well-recognized, uh, gentleman here in our community. Philip and Kleena O'Birdy, I'm sure some of you may know them, but they were, it was cute to see them out there, uh, they, they went out there together, it was great, and again. Um, our former mayor and supervisor Robert Poitras, we did also have, uh, the four around forty. Um, we had Brian and Nick Davis, um, my understanding is that, um, their father passed soon after. So, our condolences to, to the family, I'm not sure that's what I understood. Um, Nicole Mosqueda again from, uh, the Camarena, and last but not least, our very own Nikki Ringcone. From Parks and Rec was recognized as well, so I want to make sure that I gave those recognitions with that, uh, mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protim Rodriguez, um, councilmember Zachariah.
Uh, I, I'll echo, uh, uh, councilmember Rodriguez, uh, in, attending the achievement awards, it was nice to see our community. Uh, just like tonight with our proclamation to the seniors, it's, it's kinda nice to see Maderans and the hard work they put in to make this a better place. Um, so, it was a ni- nice time and I, I enjoy the camaraderie, so that's all I have to report, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Montez.
Councilmember Rodriguez is still in the thunder. So, also, had a great time, uh, seeing all the good work that the Derry County Food Bank, uh, does. Um, that was a, a very fun event, and also recognized the CAP MC, which we have a seat on. A board member on, uh, recognizing their great partnership and everything that they do, uh, also attended the one-year anniversary. Or. No, yes, alright, got it right, and, uh, so I really wanna thank, uh, them for their. Uh, for them giving back to the community, they gave, uh, hundreds of backpacks, uh, food, um, and they have, uh. They provide great service to the community, they give people rides, uh, that don't have vehicles to go and they provide great groceries there, so. Um, appreciate them for everything they do in the committee, and that's my report.
Thank you, councilmember Montez, um, I just wanna do a shout out to our staff, we've had, um, two major water breaks in the city. And between our, um, streets and water sewer and law enforcement, making sure that, uh. That they're protected when they're doing this work, I thank them, we did have a fire in the city, and so. We took care of that, everybody is, is rallying around this community to make sure that we're safe every turn that we look. We did have a passing of, um, uh, Mondryark Patriarch, uh. Young, a young woman, I call her young because she always said she was young, Dorothy Nishimoto, ninety-six years old, passed away a couple of weeks ago, and everybody knows her as the owner of Bridge Door. Who will soon be lost, but her kids are still here, going to carry on the Nishimoto name and the giving to this community constantly. Giving to all our schools, to giving to, um, uh, nonprofit organizations, so, uh, she will be truly missed in this community. But it's nice to know that their legacy will live on with a school named after their family and their kids being a part of this great community. And with that, um, I would like to open and notice. And call the special meeting of the Madera City Council open. With the additional of what we already have going, if our city attorney would please announce both closed session items.
Thank you, we have two closed session items for the regular meeting, item G one, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven B one. The title is city clerk, item two on the regular agenda is conference of labor negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six. The agency designated representative is Mayor C.C. Gallegos, the title is city clerk. As for the special meeting, we have one item, the agenda title is, two items, I'm sorry, I can read here. Item A one, conference of legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five. Five four nine five six point ninety-three one case, and A two, conference of legal counsel anticipated litigation deciding whether initiate litigation pursuant to government code section. Five four nine five six point ninety-four one case, thank you.
And with that, um, both, all closed session items, I open it up for public comment, anybody in the chamber, city clerk Gonzalez, anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none, mayor.
Thank you, I close public comment, at this time, we'll move into closed sessions, those of you that are leaving us, um, safe travels home and, um, good night. And everybody else will be back in a little bit.
Thank you.
Welcome back this evening. I am going to turn this over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you for that. And at this time at 10:44, I will adjourn the meeting and see everybody back Wednesday, September 3rd. Have a great evening. Thank you.